How are you?
It's so good.
I know, right?
We can change that. Pick that real fast. Like I said, we can fix.
Demolition man, you just had to issue you a ticket for that.
No, no jackularity, didn't need memo. Miss, I don't know why I sent, I, I hit your name, still send stuff to clean. I, I fixed it.
Oh my God.
Yeah. It's no fun, no, no, I'm good. Any issue, okay, I say.
Oh, we'll say. Yeah, they're struggling a little bit. Well, they were without someone for two months.
All rise.
That's right. For Jake, for Jake, alright. Actually, for the chairman, he's got a gavel. Yeah, I know. Or approach. I, I didn't know, but I, I don't. Alright, you know, um, I'll look up people. The thing was put out there, I'm pretty sure, and it was in the paper. Uh, just saying, I'll double check. I know I had two of them, one. Yeah, I saw the topic, well, I didn't see it long ago as well. It was weird, and I get hold, you know, I'm on all the subscriptions, and then I tried to like, look, but I don't know why. Happened before the other one?
Yeah.
You, you know what a report? Yeah, I think, I think they both got it, I'm pretty sure, in the paper that is. I thought it was on the other book.
Obviously, that's in the paper, it's been online, but.
Alright, yeah, that's who I get. You know, I saw it, and I said, hmm, okay, alright, and then say anything about the, and then somebody told you there was an article about the other, you know, and I'm like, okay, I don't care. But, move on. I don't know if I have to do that.
Hey, how are you?
Hello.
I got, yeah, I want to talk to you about the, you know what, too, on this. I got bad news for you, which you already heard. Yeah. I'll tell you the bad news. Nah, I'm joking, it's good news.
Based on the number of people coming, you can actually sit up in the next seat and move it over.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So that we don't have an empty seat up here and then.
Right. Good, that's fine.
Over there. Bob, did you slip a message about press?
I saw. Did you hear it? I think it was in the news, yeah, the heat was up.
Yeah.
He was new, right, was it the?
Well, relatively speaking, compared to the, you know. I think this is like last October or something. Yeah, that more out, that's what I'm doing. See influence now.
I'm doing it now.
And another link now.
You do or you don't see?
They were both linking at different times, they're both solid now.
So Denise, are you ready?
Yes.
Six, always six.
Yes. Yes, I forgot.
I was going with your list, your list only has six, so I think it's seven, so I wondered.
I said six first and then I.
That's okay. Alright, six is enough. The game is not.
Just let me know when you're ready.
Okay, looks like we're good.
Alright. And according to the Old Republic Meeting Act, please note the following: All Burnsville Borough Council meetings will be held in person in the meeting hall. Here, on the second floor of the Burnsville Municipal Building at 166 Mineworth Road. Meetings will also be livestreamed on YouTube. But with no opportunity for public comment. Members of the public wish you to offer comments or ask questions when you require to attend meetings in person. The YouTube livestream access for all meetings is youtube@burnsvilleborough/streets. This link will also be available on the Agenda Freedom Meeting, which is posted on the Borough website, which is burnsvilleborough.org. And on the Borough Hall publicly, public voting board at least forty-eight hours prior to meetings. Notice of these changes have also been emailed through the Burnsville News and the Current News by posting a copy on the Borough website and by filing a copy with the Municipal Clerk while in generous agreement. Is the intention of the Board not to continue any matter past eleven PM at any regular or special meeting of the Board unless a motion is passed by the members then present to extend to a later specified time. And same shall be announced at the opening of each meeting. In addition, the Board does not intend to begin a new hearing after ten PM nor begin testimony of something to the witness at the temporary PR. Any hearing conducted by the Board is a quasi judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the Board needs to consider in reaching a decision. The coram appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all. Roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Gardner? Ms. Geller? Ms. absent? Mr. Graham?
Yes, here.
Mr. Horowitz?
Here.
Mr. McQueen is absent? Mr. Simaw?
Here.
Mr. Walden?
Here.
And Mr. Zazarino? You have a requirement, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
Welcome.
Uh, meeting minutes. Any comments on, on October twelve to sixteen, we're carrying Denise to the next meeting?
Yeah, I sent them out late, so.
So just the October twelfth meeting minutes.
Good. On page three, and one is a title, and it's, um. The qualitative items. The last one, correction needed in the code to detach accessory dwelling, I'm assuming it should be unit.
Okay, you see that? Yeah.
And then the next paragraph, it's just a, a comment about, I have a cottage or cottages or parties, it'd be the A cottage or A apartment, not four, you see that?
I don't have it in front of me right now, so, but, okay.
Exactly, it's just, take the A out.
Oh, gotcha, there's an extra A in there.
Yeah, just take the A out, nonetheless, it's okay.
Got it.
By giving permission for these rental units, comma, it gives us the right to inspect them and ensure that they are safe.
Okay.
Okay. Although I was not here for this meeting, apparently I'm starting with Mr. Zabel advised. It's not clear to me what actually, what that explains. Maybe it could be a little more. Mr. Zabel advised that because the Board already found the prior work, where the prior work meant. It was not inconsistent, you can find the new one not inconsistent, but with the recommendations of correct regulation being relocated. I just think that should be more clear about what we were talking about.
Okay, I'll have a conversation with Mr. Zabel to clarify that.
And that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments?
I'll move a minute with the adjustments that Karen just suggested.
I'll second that. Our passage.
Do you want to? Oh, yes.
Yes.
Okay. The motion carries?
Um, just abstentions, of course, for the absent members.
Right, it was just one.
Two, chat two.
Oh, yes.
Thanks, thank you.
Okay, um, on the communications. I didn't read this one, but there's anything on this DOT letter?
It's innocuous.
Innocuous?
That would be the legal. They are about, about one way, you know?
Hey, let's see, I was looking at the, I don't know, it was to the. Just the Edwallon Scallowall, I guess, where craft is promoting it back in COVID. Crosses under two oh two. Your peasant health drive. Okay. Because we're gonna compare to the bridge, it's just to be probably, it's eroding after the COVID. Okay. Alright.
But they just need to, just give the notice that.
That they're applying.
Applying, yeah, that's. I apologize, I didn't mean to mean what was being done was innocuous, but it's not related, then it came to the Board to see.
No, no, it is.
Usually is.
Alright, um, is there anyone here that wants to discuss anything that's not on the agenda? So, visitors.
That famous chairman. Aaron, fifty-one Crestview.
I'm sorry, there, Aaron Duff, okay, and.
The address was fifty-one Crestview, one word.
Yeah, right, um, no, thank you, gotcha.
Thank you, I just wanted to quickly respectfully ask for a status update on the Board's consideration of the Parks and Rec master plan report. Um, the last, I remember, was in April last year, there was a working group meeting, some suggestions were made, some area of additional inquiry, and then. It was on the agenda for a while as, you know, a pending matter that was gonna be a public hearing TVB. Um, and it's since fallen off, so I just kinda wanted to figure out where that stood and. If in line of consensus plan to be back before the final vote.
Oh.
Well, Chairman, there was some, they were, they were leaving cell by the board to discuss the plan. And there were some modifications to the document that the consultant made on behalf of the Borough, as requested by the Board. And it's a matter of reviewing that document, being back on agenda, just never made it back, I don't know why.
Who's got the time?
Well, I guess the Board might be in our court, I can, I can review where we are with it and advise the Board, and then I can advise. Denise, what the status is, and then we can schedule for, let's say, another works, and then we can get adopted.
Okay.
I don't think it's, it's at a point where I think we could find a lot of different.
It's, I thought it was pretty.
Yeah, the consultant made changes in response to comments that I and the Board had. It weren't substantive, but they were full amendments, so we need to reconsider. Because it is being treated as an element of the master plan, we need to have a public hearing of notice.
Anyway.
Why don't we, why don't we circle back, put it on the, on an agenda, to kind of review it one last time, and schedule a public hearing, and then advertise for it and adopt it.
Right.
And if I make a dovetail off the suggestion, good suggestion, like, or plan, John. Um, I, I'm just noticing with our, our pending, kind of turning the pending applications, which is maybe a little too narrow, albeit accurate, our item I. Uh, it should be pending applications and other matters, and that way, you know, it really should get back on there. Because we only have applications that are forthcoming, even those that are not being completed yet. But, but we should have all our other matters that are pending in there.
Right, well, courts will work together with Denise.
Okay, yeah. Where are the backpacks?
Yeah. Okay, and, and thank you, Mr. Duff.
Do we need to do anything, John, for, um, and, or, uh, kind of change?
Uh, my firm submitted a proposal, I will go back with the, with the mayor and council, see, you know, what was submitted to them, see how they want to proceed.
Okay, so this is trying to be handled over there, essentially.
I'm sure the consultation finally.
So I know we have to add an element or something. Or by some point, they'll update it, someone's know.
Well, our point was, yes, that time goes by. And, and the issues that will be covered by that plan become irrelevant to put downtown jobs, and then you can't go back and undo it. So the goal is to move ahead, even if it wasn't required by another amendment of the plan. So if the press.
You're not concluded from doing it.
Right, despite, despite that, yes. So if you press counsel on, I'll follow our urgency on that, that would be my follow-up on that. What do they call that more, you know, prepayment penalty? Yeah, you do it early. The mandatory trigger is sort of changed to their nasty front end in Sullivan, but you're, just like the league said, you have to do it every ten years, you can do one continuing. So, I think it's prudent, and I will go back and borrow on that.
Yeah, I guess, where they were, and we're, we are, so, okay, great.
Couple of resolutions.
Okay, all reasons, resolutions, uh, one fourteen Claremont. Resolution?
And one comment on that. Uh, one of the variances that we've noted in the, is that they were committed to remove more than fifty percent of trees.
Okay.
And that, we did approve that, that variance. But I thought it's conditioned on their planting replacement trees, but the theory was that the trees that were there were kind of wee, crummy. And that they would plant additional trees that would replace, uh, the, the other tree now. Maybe that's covered in the landscaping plan, but it's not, I think it should be explicit, they're supposed to, and other substantial trees to replace the ones they're cutting down.
It didn't excuse them from having to replace trees, it allowed them to, um. Delete more than a fifty percent canopy, but if they remove a tree, they have to replace it.
Or make it necessary.
One way or another, there's still a requirement to plant a certain number of trees, and if they can't do it, then they have to move the contribution, they were, they were never.
What we can do is condition eight that speaks to it, the applicant shall. Plant the requisite number of replacement trees. And. Uh, make, really, really leave the rest as is, and make any necessary contributions to grow a tree that replaces by. Based upon how much they replant, that affects how much they have to pay the tree fund, uh, so we don't really need to change that language.
No, you don't need to.
But that, I think, would that make it clear enough? Yeah, it should be clear that, that they can't replace a big part of the, of the weed. Well, that, that's pursuant to the, that's also pursuant to the pre-protection ordinance. In other words, it's specific as to what's required to replace certain trees with what, uh. Uh, yeah, diet, uh, bread, pipe, yeah, the first diameter, uh, you know.
Tower.
Cal, cal, yeah, the tree and the like, yeah. So, we know enough to be dangerous, but yes. So, yeah, that, that's incorporated in, in the language by virtual incorporating, uh, the ordinance provision. But thank you for pointing that out, so with, with that change, if there's no others, that would be a motion to adopt. Any other change? I move the adoption of the resolution. And then both the Board members, I don't have a list of these. Just make sure you. Sorry, I'm looking at the, at the resolution itself, you got it, thank you.
Okay, so, Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Horowitz?
Yes.
And Mr. Walton?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Simaw?
Yes.
Sorry, wrong one.
Okay, uh. The second resolution, mine for renewal, associations, this is the sixty-three Brenner's. Application.
That's exactly right, and one of three hundred percent portable scatter sites. Uh, first one to be approved with respect to amended funding and final, and hopefully we memorialized it accurately. It certainly made its rounds around all Board professionals and applicant professionals, but we're gonna hear now a few, few things with this. One of the things is that there was a provision that appeared in several places in conditions, that there'd be three parking spaces that. They couldn't park overnight. And it's a little confusing whether, how many times they have to do that, but I thought the point of those three parking spaces. That they were supposed to be sufficiently near the garbage dumpster as to permit the, um, the, the, our, our, the K turn in there. And that's mentioned once in the, um, in conditions. But the, that other condition, the three spots, I think repeated three additional times. And I think I have a little confusion. I think if you're looking for them, it's, um, five Roman three, five Roman two. Wait, they, they, they're, I think, uh. The, um, it's just one in. It's a lot of subcategories and Romans, uh, they're.
It's in at least three.
Too much of the conditions altogether. I think it's about page thirty, page, yeah, we page thirty. If you can point me to where we actually have the detail, and then I'll make sure it gets repeated in the places it needs to be repeated. Look at, on page thirty-five, five, when, three lies, it's there. And it's in the paragraph, but it's. Also, okay, page thirty, number five, Roman, small Roman. Two, it's two and three. Two and three. The applicant should designate three parking stalls would be at the northernmost row of proposed parking spaces as guest and overnight parking stalls. Right, and three covers the point of that's supposed to provide for the turning radius, they're never tied together. So, you know, as it's written, they put those three spots anyplace on the. Okay, so we can tie those two together and then repeat it where appropriate in subsequent. Or, or delete the repetitions. We happen to have counsel for the applicant here, and so we don't normally do this, but since we had the opportunity to counsel for the applicant, we able to follow that, if you have any objection or to that modification?
No objection.
Thank you. Um. And the concept I think is sufficiently explained, so certainly the Board can adopt it tonight. I'm not saying that's the only one, there might be more, with that, with that change, without having to see it again, in my opinion. But, is there an action?
There was a duplication of proposed, proposing somewhere, if you look for the word propose, it's like. A, the applicant proposed, and then it says proposed again, it's like.
Oh, okay, and this, and somewhere in the resolution? We'll find it, we'll play that.
You'll see at the beginning of the sentence, it'll start saying, and then it'll lead it or repeat it.
We will find it, that's also a change that would be made.
Do you want to, because I know you did the research, you work with applicants, so, but did you want to put anything in it about the total? The aggregate of the three projects, because on the face of it, you can't have six singles.
Oh, you're talking about the allocation of the four.
The offsetting doubles and triples, in other words, the only reason you can have six singles in this. Development is because they're doing the other two as well.
I, I know we, we referenced the global scattered sites.
Yes.
Um, but, I mean, I guess we did not reference the fact that in totality, UHAC is going to comply with that as to, among other things, better distribution.
Exactly.
Uh, I think there's no objection from applicant's counsel.
No, because.
I think we'll add that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, did all the works, might as well.
At the front end, um.
Someone doesn't say, hey, wait a minute.
Yeah, if they look at it in isolation, uh, and they're focused on it, like, one, one of the few of us might be, yes. The, um, affordable housing allocation, UHAC, the world book, the world three sites is my little notebook myself. Again, a concept that I think with, particularly with the simulation, the applicant's counsel here, we have the applicant, uh, who can adopt tonight. Trusting me to make accurate and make that change.
Uh, absolutely. Was there any other comment?
And then you definitely qualify for those, right, totally, I know you do, because it's right here.
I only have one other, I only have one other thing, and it was, it seemed to me it's in a vein. It's kind of, we're gonna, we can do the project, we're giving you permission, but there's a whole issue of the drainage going to the west or going out to grow, and it was sort of. Pretty well, we're gonna work on that, you know, because we need to get the rights to access the drainage, that's where we left it, right?
Generally, and, maybe Bob can jump in, but generally, as the Board knows, uh, generally, there are things left over for some review and approval of oftentimes engineering. Uh, uh, sometimes planner, and very occasionally attorney, uh, the, the, um. So, you know, that may fall under that scenario, but if you want to refer to the specifics, or if Bob wants to address it for, simply for resolution adoption purposes.
Well, as the plan is now, you can demonstrate that there's capacity in that system that grows. To grow. Then there's, the applicant's gonna have to look at options. So if they wanted to, so they, they proven they could do it, that's the whole thing, you can do the, you can do the plan, and you can comply and so forth. But there are optimizations, there often are, build optimization and so forth, so. Okay, so I guess that's open, if it's, there was an ability to get access to that pipe, uh, goes through the property. So we're leaving it that way intentionally, that's the point, it's okay, I just, they. That, that was my understanding. Yeah, okay, I just wanted to convert. Now, I was looking at it, and. There was all this deep slope, variances and so forth, if they pitched the land back, drain to the back, to the, to the west. Would they have needed those steep slopes? I believe so, because I think they're up near the, um, kind of that elbow. Of, anyway. It slopes down to the neighbor's property, so I don't know that that would eliminate. But I know they had, they had an elevator to this, to, to get it to flow. I'm not gonna follow up, I just wanted to be sure it was still open, they still have the flexibility to do that if they can figure out how to do it, I guess. It sounds engineering preferable to run it into that large pipe that's, that's there, if they can do it, if, if they can.
And good teachable moment for our newer Board members, because there's, uh, never is everything a hundred percent done and definitive. Uh, and that's not the Board's job, uh, but the Board's job is to make sure it's feasible, uh, and. Uh, and approvable or not, you know, the applicant has the.
That's that's, yes, you know, essentially, and then.
So there are always various things, and a lot of subject to review and approval.
Yeah, and when they build stuff, they'll bring Bob in and say, what, you know, you can't just do this space in this way, how can you do it, you know, and that's one of the things.
Yeah, you'll often see conditions where it's if this, then that, but if that, then this type of thing. And that that's appropriate and a good way of for the board to handle things. Can't do everything, uh, you know, things do change.
Okay.
But we have a thorough report we're blessed to have.
Any other comments from our professionals or board on this?
I can assure you didn't do it twice already, I don't give a third.
Okay, so, um. Wow, the same three. So, uh, someone.
Okay, I'll make the motion. I'll second it.
Okay.
Mr. Graham.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Harwitz.
Yes.
And Mr. Sima.
Yeah.
We ran the table three O again.
Okay. Great. Most good tears.
All paying the bills in the front end now.
No, just pay the bills, right? And then new business?
You're all Mr. Sabos, I think you should.
No bills?
He's for the only ones that come in in the interim.
Okay.
For the board's end of condition, I have nothing to do with it.
That's right. That's right.
Yeah, that's not your office.
And 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 John had nothing to do with that skipping up from the end of the agenda to the to caution to the beginning of it.
Well, it's nice to know.
You already got it.
I already got it.
But you're happy the rest of the meeting.
You can make it totally.
By only the paid.
That's a motion second and a voice vote.
Any comments? No, just motion. Someone in motion to pay the bills.
My motion.
Can you be that?
Add a second. Just pay John's bills. Are you sure you get a total amount, do you have a total amount here?
Yeah, I didn't.
Five thousand twenty-one dollars and twenty-five cents.
Thank you.
I'll make that motion. What that amount? Five thousand twenty-one.
Twenty-five cents.
Don't forget the twenty-five cents.
Yeah, who gets the twenty-five cents?
Well, no, wait a minute, Mr. Zazarin, I'll make the motion.
I already motioned, I guess I didn't say the dollar amount.
That's okay, okay, Mr. Zat, we understand the motion.
I'll I'll make. I'll say.
You got a second and a voice vote of the. Uh, yeah.
A server. Aye, any opposed? Any.
So Mr. Sabo stand.
Let's say we're paying them.
Okay, I mean, some hearings.
All right, so now we're to the main event on the public hearings. Uh, the first hearing is the Mine Brook Road Urban Renewal Association. Uh, this is Mine Brook Road, it's block eighty, month fifteen, dot three eight. It's an affordable housing zone. And we'll really see you. Stick up.
This was carried from January eleventh, and we have an extended time to act, so we'll continue to have jurisdiction.
Is everybody eligible?
And I I just want to wrap the show that I just watched the entire video of that meeting, so.
Right, and uh, you will sign certification if you haven't already, as soon as Denise provides it to you, but the MLUL only requires that you make that representation. You can sign a certification at any time. My recommendation is sooner rather than later. So, uh, so we have six qualified club members, more than a quorum, so we not only have jurisdiction, we can effectively here decide a case tonight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warner. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, Nicole Manciak, M A G D C I A K of the law firm Day Pitney, here this evening on behalf of the applicant. As was introduced, we are here for a continued hearing on the amended preliminary and final site plan application related to the property on Mine Brook Road. This is one of the three affordable housing sites. We were tasked at the end of the last meeting on the eleventh with a. List of a couple items to address for this meeting. We were able to prepare a concept plan by our concept layout plan that incorporates a trail easement. We also were able to provide that to Mr. Pigeon, the borough's attorney, who relayed it to the director of DPW, John McDowell. We have been in communication with him as well, and he has provided us some feedback on the proposed location, which we find to be acceptable and feasible. So we'll be able to present that tonight. Mr. Brightley also reviewed that plan and had some comments as to some of the features and locations of things, and. We're also able to incorporate his comments, so we'll address that this evening as well. So we are hopeful that that brings the trail easement and access issue. Um, at least very close to a resolution for the purposes of the planning board to a resolution, and we'll continue to work with the borough on that item. We also were able to, as part of that, shift the building because we had to gain ten feet on the. Boundary of the property in order to provide for that easement, so you'll see that in the layout plan as well this evening and the impact that that has on the wall. We also have some amendments to the floor plans by the our architect, so he will be able to describe what has changed. The biggest change is that we have relocated the community room to the corner of the building that is most impacted by the retaining wall. So that we can eliminate living space in that area and just have the community space, so we don't have somebody who's living full time in a unit. Near the highest point of the wall, so that will be explained this evening as well. And then we also have information from the fire department. Our engineer was able to reach out to the fire chief, and they had a very productive conversation. So we have some comments, though we didn't get them in writing from him in the form of a letter to the board. We can represent to the board what those comments were and the fact that we can comply with them, so with that, I'd like to introduce Kevin Shelley, who is our engineer.
And as you mentioned, Shelley, you've made under oath, and I think your license for that was a good standing.
Yes, it does.
And I think the board will continue to accept it, and that's been the field of civil engineering, Mr. Trump, yeah?
Wonderful. Good evening. I have the ability to share my screen again.
Oh, I might need to hold on. I thought I knew you and then got distracted.
Did you type the last one as exhibit eight-four from last time, and then according to your notes, you can go to eight-five for the next exhibit, we'll get there.
Uh, wonderful, right, so we can mark this as exhibit eight-five. It is a colored site ring ring of the project. It is dated today, January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, and again, we get all the feedback from the last hearing, um, comments about the proposed trailhead. Take the laser pointer out. Um, our recommendation, or we put together a concept plan that showed access. Uh, to the trailhead coming across the back of the the property sidewalk behind our building extended to the trailhead. Um, hard to see on the plant with the trees here, uh, but as one of the members of the public had brought up at the end of the hearing that. It appeared that the DPW had already physically relocated some of that trail, uh, starting in that back corner and running up the hill. Um, Mr. McDowell from the DPW had confirmed that as well for us, um, when we provided the concept plan. Um, so the idea was we took all of the building, the parking, shifted it back over to the to the right-hand side of the plan, five feet. To provide a ten-foot easement along the western property line. Um, and then we connected a a path for the residents of this community, uh, to the current location of the trailhead that's been recut. Um, so one of the, again, the the concept plan was provided to the to the board, to professionals, and Mr. Brightley had. Uh, a recommendation, uh, that instead of running the the walkway behind the trash enclosure and connecting it in. That we put an opening through the wall, run the path on the on the upper side of the wall. Uh, and connect it to the trailhead while sliding our trash enclosure back, um, which we were able to accommodate, and what it did was. It allowed us the opportunity to get an extra surface parking space, uh, out in the front. Uh, at their last hearing, if you remember, we had testified that the plan submitted had fifty parking spaces. We lost three underneath the building. Uh, to account for a larger water ring, to account for the backfill preventer, uh, to make sure there's no hot box outside the building. Uh, bringing the parking total down to forty-seven spaces, which is still compliant. Uh, but again, we were able to add an additional parking space, um, as a result of this plan change, uh, to bring the total parking to forty. Um, so again, I think that, uh, that is a net positive for the project. It gives residents of the community, um, have access to this trail, uh, to beat up the slope. And at the end of the day, I think it was, uh, you know, an overall net positive. Uh, we also had, um, the recommendation was to reject the fire chief about comments. Uh, we hadn't received a letter, but. Uh, I had reached out to the fire chief, um, and spoke to him, uh, yesterday and today about the application. Um, you did not provide a formal letter, but there were some comments and recommendations that he relayed to us that he would like to see. Uh, one of them was, uh, one hour fire rating within the stairwells and community space, which we're happy to comply with. It was a thirteen, uh, a thirteen fire, uh, sprinkler system inside, again, the stairwells and hallway quarters, which we'd agree to comply with. Uh, recommendation that we push all EV parking spaces with the exception of the handicap accessible EV space out from underneath the building. Uh, which we agree, which we would agree to comply with as well. Uh, and the last one was that there's no electric vehicles or electric bike, I guess, uh, charging in the units or within the lobbies. Which again, we would agree to comply with. Um, so I think it was a, it was a positive conversation. We talked through the plan. Um, and some of the the reasonings behind those recommendations, what they're seeing, uh, from a fire safety standpoint, um, and we're happy to comply with those recommendations. And and we would just continue working with this, uh, the chief regarding exact location of the eighty-eight parking space, the EV space underneath the building. Uh, and work at those final details, uh, with him as the plans get finalized.
And Mr. Shelley, as a result of sliding the building in order to accommodate that ten-foot easement, can you just describe the impact to the wall?
Yeah, sorry. Uh, so again, the building, the parking, and this portion of the retaining wall shifted five feet, uh, back to the the right right-hand side of the plan. The back corner here, where the retaining wall is the highest, uh, I testified at the year or two years ago that the maximum height of the wall was about twenty-one and a half feet now, down to thirty-five. Shifting it back over five feet only increased the height of the wall by about a foot and a half. Uh, so again, it's a maximum height in this corner of about twenty-three feet. Uh, again, that's only in that corner. As you start passing the the corner, getting towards the the front of the building or to the the rest of the back. That wall is dropping to fifteen feet and continuing to get below that, uh, for majority of, uh, the back of the building here. Uh, it's really just this kind of back area that's, uh, the most significant in terms of the height of the wall. So again, minor foot and a half change to the height of the wall, uh, as a result of shifting the building back over, uh, five feet.
And Mr. Shelley, overall, the wall is still significantly lower than what was previously approved, correct?
Yes, correct.
What did you say was in the west, the northwest corner? That there was something like a utility fair? No, 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 where the tree is. It's where the tree.
Here.
There, you said it was, what's there?
Uh, we would expect that's probably where the transformer goes.
That's what you said, okay.
That's where we would compose it.
That's what I remember, okay, thanks.
Yeah, we have the site sign out. That was another change. We, at the end of the hearing, it was recommended to us based off of the. Uh, the speeds on the road to maybe talk about making that sign a a little larger. Um, it was previously seven feet wide. We're proposing to extend the base to ten foot, um, which makes the actual sign area about nine foot in width. Uh, not making it any taller, making the letters a little bit larger so they're easier to be seen from pets and vehicles. Uh, so that was one of the other changes that we made.
So what was the new dimension?
Um, ten feet total and and I guess length.
And what are the dimensions of the letters again?
Uh, I increased the letters, uh, the the main community name, zoom in. Are five inches in height. The address at four. And the RPM community at the bottom at three. It's still a two and a half foot sign area, but we would try to maximize.
No, it's part of a.
It's on the sheet.
It's on the sheet.
It is on the sheet.
It was.
It's just that, okay.
It's all one, thank you.
Just confirm those mentions.
Sure, um, let me certainly dive to it, just to those. The base is ten feet. The overall height of the sign remains two and a half feet tall. The sign area itself will be two and a half feet in height by nine feet. The bottom is a stone-based image, building two foot by ten foot. But we're gonna increase the size of the letters to try to maximize visibility.
The letters, I can just chime in, five-inch letters is about a hundred and fifty feet. The manual uniform traffic control device, which dictates letter sizes for traffic control signs, it's thirty, thirty feet per inch. So if the letter is five inches, you can see it at a hundred and fifty feet, which at forty miles an hour is about sixty feet per second, so you can see it for about. Three seconds, four seconds.
Hey, if we have the ability to make it larger, again, we want to make sure it's appropriate, um, to maximize it, but still make sure that. It's not just all the letters all in there at once on the plan, but, you know, I think five inches is probably the the minimum we would go. Again, if there's, and I don't believe there's any ordinance about the size and the letters. I think the signs in general are just not permitted, uh, as a whole, but.
I think included in the.
Right. Um. As we, as we prepare a mock-up and things like that of the sign, if those letters can.
Subject through beyond approval, uh, at reasonable discretion of our engineer?
Yeah, that'd be fine with us.
The sign that?
There's a uplighting from the ground, yes. But it's not like an LED back to the head of the sign. So those are the the changes to the site plan that we had made as a result of the hearing.
You do go back to the corner with the pathism. Zoom in. So someone wanted to do the trail on this property. You walk up and converge between the parking lot and the neighbor, that one was.
What what would happen is there's this ten-foot space is an easement that would be granted to the borough. To provide access to the trail. The walkway that we are providing through the wall and around the back of the wall physically connected to the trail would be for our residents. We're not promoting outside, uh, visitors from walking through the the site and the improvements to go access the trail. That's the purpose of the whole ten-foot wide easement on that side where the borough will to. Visit, you know, we left the trees, the landscaping that was there previously still on there. That's something that we're happy to talk with the board's professionals about, whether we leave the area. Clean, lawn, open, or whether there's a desire for landscaping in there that would not interfere with the potential trail. A physical trail being extended out to the roadway, um, but the improvements that are shown on the plan would be for the the residents of this community.
Right, so so people wanting, non-residents wanting to access the trail, don't have to go through, twelve, under, retain that.
Correct, the idea would be that there is a a additional trail out to the right of way, that would be the borough's.
And you're gonna regrade it anyway, right?
Regret what?
The area, ten-foot area. Isn't that part of your grading plan?
Yeah, the yeah, the area in between the parking and the property line would be regraded and either landscaped or lawn seeded, whatever the. Desirable, uh, finish for that area.
Right, I think that maybe John's, um, take a look. Right, I think that maybe John's firm take a look at that. Make sure that the landscaping and the layout is proper.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Isn't there a little, a teeny like retaining wall on the border between your property and the west? Property to the west. Uh is it on your property or is that over? That's on there.
The survey. Can't tell you at the time. And there's curbing that's right on the property line.
It's curving?
Yeah.
Whatever, just as long as you. Figure out what you're doing with it, that's all, well.
Yeah, I mean, the the idea would be there would be ten feet between their curb and our curb and, yep.
Cause there is just some existing stuff there.
I think there's a burn kind of.
There's a berm and like a little wallet there and it's like.
I think they built that burn to keep the drainage running.
Yeah, I mean, the borough cleared that area to use as staging. That seems like probably something that they would do to. Make sure that they're not sending to run up onto that neighborhood.
Alright, wow.
I think that the berm is actually right up against the uh gravel area. It's not it's not close to the property line that we um.
There's just something there.
Fifteen or twenty feet away from the uh parking lot.
Concrete ish. That's all that I mentioned, okay. Great. I think that was it, right? Those those will be items. Uh that he's covering, then there's the discussion of the community rooms, right?
Yes.
And there was a monster.
Were you thinking of putting any more, maybe a different witness, any more trees?
Yeah, we talked about the last time we were, I missed the Zabel, about the appropriate uh landscape in the front yard, whether that's. In the right way.
We made some landscape comments, they agreed to work with my.
Just just uh one comment that that cut out on the trail easement. I know it's not showing on this plan, but it's probably about a forty five degree angle once you get past the retaining wall um. To be with John McDowell, it wasn't exactly, I know we marked up a plan where it is, but you feel like should be located to each EBS unit?
Yes, absolutely. That's something that we would go out there, locate the physical trail, they cut it to the environment and we would center. Um any easement about.
The apartment was okay with the fan, the whole thing where you've got.
Yeah, they were fine with the the layer, the underground parking um. Yeah, but the exhaust fan in front of the building.
Auxiliary fan, I guess.
Yes.
Never been on before, alright.
Yeah, if if there's no more board questions, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if there's any other professional questions now for the name.
Okay.
Uh then we should just do public, uh if any questions real quick. There's public questions.
Better end up again, um I think you said ten feet, I just wanted to confirm the uh width of the.
Yeah, the width of the easement would be a ten foot wide.
And so you got a, and then you're going to do the meets and down and around with this curve uh.
Correct, the the idea is that the ten foot easement, at least along the property line. We would we would propose it to follow the same. If the trail is wider than that, we would provide an appropriately with easement up the trail.
Any other questions from the public for this?
Thank you.
Thank you, next one.
Our next witness is our architect.
I'll tell you your first name and address again, the block number, what was this, DOU CAS. Walking is J O A. Six thirty two Pompet Avenue Cedar Group, as you were sworn last time, as you understand, you're made under oath and I think your license remains good standing. It is also a lesson for the board interested exceptions and an expert in field of work, please proceed. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll mark this as a six.
Well, it's actually the. No, this is the uh.
It's mine. I work at Warren. Not again, not wanting to go there.
Cause I don't know.
But she said she didn't.
So this would be a six.
Yeah, this would be a six.
And what is it?
So this is a retaining wall cross section. Um we show the uh various sections around the highest.
Sorry, can you just give us a date?
Oh, sure. It's one twenty six, uh one twenty five, twenty three.
Twenty four, twenty four to twenty three.
Uh one twenty, sorry, it's labeled wrong, but it should be twenty four. One twenty five, forty four.
Yeah, I'm sorry, please continue, Charles.
Um, okay, so. Here, there's a key map of where the uh. Section cuts are being made. So uh we took a section, section B is, uh section B and D is uh essentially at the highest point of the retaining wall. And cutting through where the uh community room is now. And then A is a further uh little uh south and C was um. Moving east where the retaining, the retaining wall start west starts uh to step down. So in the section, section A, the retaining wall is sixteen foot, four and a quarter. Uh the building is ten feet away. You can see that the second floor um opens up already. Uh you would already not be looking at the uh retaining wall on the first floor. Ten feet away would be the retaining wall.
And and it's ten feet away, I'm sorry, my name is Chairman, is ten feet away the community, you from the community room?
No, well, that's 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 from A unit at section A and as we move.
On the first floor, it's all okay. Uh section B is where.
Section B is where the community room is.
For N D. N D, section D is where the community room is.
That's right.
B and D, but not A and C, there we go.
Right, here we have uh retaining walls about twelve feet away. And this is essentially the highest uh portion of the retaining wall, uh twenty feet, four and a half inches. Um but at that point, you could even see, even though the second floor is still looking at the retaining wall. Uh you would have a clear view uh to uh the sky. Section D. Again, cuts through the community room, ten feet away, um twenty one six. And section C.
I'm trying, how tall is it at the uh? And D?
At D, twenty one six.
Twenty six is the height.
Of the retaining wall.
Right, uh and.
Another question for uh section D. Um being that the community room is now on that corner, you're showing the entrance to that, to the uh community room from the exterior. Um uh this facade, on the back facade. Uh and it's a covered entrance? How wide is, how far off the building is that roof?
About four feet.
It's four feet. It's so, just not drawn correctly on the plan. Uh I'm looking at the the plans that uh. Aren't, that haven't been shown yet, but. Uh it looks like it's about seven feet on the plans. So you're saying that it's gonna, there's gonna be a roof that overhang is four feet, so it'll be six feet away from that wall.
Uh well, yes, if it's if it's four feet, but we'll we'll go through the plan and uh we can look at that together.
Yes, from the edge of the canopy to the wall of sixteen.
Uh and then section C. Is seventeen foot, six feet away and the retaining wall, as you can see, starts to now step down. And it's ten feet six in this location. So this is the new plan.
Eighty seven.
Eighty seven, this is sheet A one ten. And it's dated one twenty three, twenty four updated layout. We'll zoom in through. This area here, yeah, I see what you mean, um. Yeah, I think we copied it over as as it was on this side, um. It doesn't need to be as deep. I mean, even if it's six feet, it's still four feet away from from the wall. Um I think even four feet, uh although no, it needs to be, it needs to be at least seven feet, I think. Or six, six feet, uh the sidewalk. For. And so you can see here the community room. We relocated it, um. Essentially the same size, at the eleven hundred and fifty three square feet. We ended up. Making a uh two bedroom here. Uh this lobby and managing office got a little wider, um doing that relocation of the the two bedroom. And then we took advantage of this whole relocation and ended up. Putting our three bedroom in this location here. And um I think one of the board members asked last week if we could. Um essentially bring out the setback that we had here, which was. Probably about ten feet uh last time and we took advantage of that, moved that wall forward and created another bedroom um. With the, put the three bedroom in this location. So I think it worked out.
Did you do that also on the, it looks like you did the the other. Bomb out, wasn't it pronounced, but?
Right, we, yeah, this was, this was already done though.
That one was already there, yeah.
Uh we.
The uh uh management, that's the. Supervisor or whatever, the super's department is in the same same place that was with the lower.
Yeah, that was gonna be the two bedroom, um I'm not sure, did we call that out? No, we didn't call that out yet, the location of it, but that would probably, most likely be on the ground floor.
Okay, and one point of clarification from preliminary site plan, uh condition eighteen of the resolution at the time had. Required that the super unit be on the first floor near the elevator and the community room, but now that the community room has been relocated. It's impossible to put the unit near both the elevator and the community room, so we would ask that that condition be revised, being that has amended plans.
Do you want it near the elevator on the first floor, but not near the community room? To stay with what I think was the intent of the board at the time of preliminary.
To have the super near the entrance, the main entrance to the building.
Or do you want to give the super the crappy apartment and such that? Right, lower right hand side with the. Next to the community one, alright, you should just figure it out.
With the board's permission, we can make the appropriate amended department issue. Yeah, well, um if I may, Mr. Chairman, was there an issue with respect uh council to council to um? Some language with respect to the superintendent uh 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 unit. In the ordinance. Uh these are being uh residential development being restricted only to portable. Units, I don't know if there's, in my mind, there's sort of an interpretation there, whether it's a strict construction. Or 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 otherwise, an interpretation of some language that was in our. Uh uh is in our ordinance. Uh we uh. So maybe uh you can address that issue while we're on the super unit.
Sure, yeah, so related to the super unit, the um potential interpretation is whether or not that unit. Is permitted as an accessory, essentially an accessory type use to the overall residential community. It was always contemplated, it was also part of the. Um application for preliminary, so to the extent that a strict reading of that language would require relief. From that particular section of the ordinance, we are seeking that relief so that we can locate the super's unit in this building on the first floor.
And just for the benefit of 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 uh. The board, what's that? Uh the the boards uh uh, all the board members. Uh uh and case in the not, you're public, there's a provision in the order. In the ordinance, residential development shall be restricted to only affordable housing units. And shall be subject to all terms and conditions pursuant to article thirteen of this chapter entitled Affordable Housing. Uh this is an affordable house and hundred percent development like the other two. Uh uh and a super unit, at least in my experience and one interpretation is that's. Assumed to be accessory and and part of, you know, the affordable uh uh hous- housing, you know, it will still be a hundred percent affordable. Uh and and comply with UHAC requirements and the like, but that said, a very strict uh interpretation could be. Well, technically, the super, super's unit might not be an affordable housing unit per se. So I think what the applicant is doing, uh even I would compare with it from a legal perspective of being. Uh uh at an abundance of caution is saying uh uh. To the extent someone might determine us to need uh uh relief from the strict interpretation of that provision. Would you be kind enough to give it to us? Uh so that was what was intended all along, I guess would be a power phrase. Uh and um you know, call that a a you know, a deviation. Uh you know, maybe a fault variance certainly covered within the catchall language in the notice that was provided, so the board certainly has intention. To grant that relief, again, this is all to the extent necessary.
And if you remove that one unit, it doesn't mess up the I HAC or. I mean, I could be taking one away.
So it was always contemplated, including at the time of the settlement agreement that the borough entered into, that there would be a super unit, so. Um correct, if you take the super unit away, we're still compliant with not only UHAC, but also with what the borough is required to provide.
I just wanted to be sure.
The only thing you get is you lost the super.
Or we have to pay him so little.
Okay, so I I I the board understands that at the appropriate time, it can be, the 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 approval is granted would include uh uh the relief to that fault.
Thank you.
Uh one more change that we had on the plans, um last time, we were showing all the PTAC units. Uh the air conditioning units underneath the windows, so we removed them from the plans, uh since we're no longer doing them. And then um. One item that the chairman asked if we could try and do was reduce the height of the roof. Um we essentially ended up moving these walls in at the roof. And if we were able to lower the roof height by uh two feet.
When you remove those air conditioning units, I don't know, engineering wise, do you, do you have to put something somewhere else? Uh mechanical somewhere?
Yeah. The condenser goes on the roof, so essentially you will end up with a uh split system inside the unit and closet, mechanical closet. And the condenser on the roof.
And did you need to show that on one of your?
We have, we had them on, actually, yeah.
I believe you stated that you had it shown on the original plans.
Yeah.
In case you had to switch it.
So it's all those. Individual condenser units.
Towards the center of the roof.
Yeah.
Which is where they're generally requesting to be.
And it was, I mentioned it, but it's our board's opinion that. It's far enough away from the neighbors at the top of it. The top of the hill, so it's not to be um intrigued. It's the top of the hill, so it's not to be, um, intrusive, uh visually hurts units visually or sound. So they're not being asked to do any kind of sound. Backholds or anything like that on those units?
They're really super quiet units anyway, you know, really super quiet.
Good, thanks.
And just for purposes of the record, can you just identify the sheet?
Oh, the roof sheet?
Oh, yes.
That we're gonna call A eight.
A eight, A one-thirty. And then we might as well call A nine. Sheet A two-hundred, which is the revised elevations with the lowered roof two feet.
And A eight was A one-thirty revised, which uh title of that is?
Roof plan.
Roof plan?
And they're all dated one-twenty-three, twenty-four. Any questions?
Well, this, you have my plan on there.
What, what? But there's no, but that is, the, the board never.
Did you consider that?
Did you, they, the question, yeah, I don't know if it's a question or not, but we have the exhibits.
Did you consider changing the shape of the building to reduce this, the height of the walls?
Uh, not at this, not at this point, and we, we looked at your sketch.
Um, a potential sketch.
A potential.
Yeah, there was, yeah, potential. Yeah, I think they, I think the rhythm was, the rhythm was a. If I understand correctly, council, uh, the preliminary approval, the retaining wall was somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty-five and a half feet. Uh, and uh, there was a request, a condition of approval that a good big effort and paraphrasing. Uh, made to try to lower the retaining wall height. And if my recollection is correct, retaining wall height was reduced down to, in the way one.
Approximately twenty-three feet.
Approximately twenty-three feet, uh from, was about thirty-sixty, thirty-five and a half, so. With math, that's about thirteen, fourteen feet, probably forty percent or so reduction. Uh, that's bad math, that's why I wrote the law school. The, the, uh, uh, it, it, from the preliminary that was approved with, with, with the good big effort condition to lower. Uh, to this plan, is that active?
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess the question, or the argument, or the engineer. Um, but the, but, but I think there's a, a, the question now is. Uh, uh, has there been consideration and is there to, of lowering it even further?
Yeah, so our engineer.
I may just. Uh, this would be classified as like a value engineering assignment. Because what always happens is another eye looking at it comes up with some different way of addressing the problem. And if I can discuss that, what, what? My value, my quote-unquote suggestion. Is to, you know, to reduce the volume further, not an architect, I'm an engineer. So I can't talk about the interior of the building, but I came up with some ideas for. Moving, moving the building further to the west, or reducing the building to the west, and making it an L-shaped building. And which would, because of where the critical area is, is on the east side of the, from the property, because that's where the greatest. Most critical, so that was, that was my suggestion. And then what I did is I, I proposed lopping off or reducing the width of the building by about forty-four feet. Because that's what I originally thought was the two-bed, about approximately two-bed, or two-units per floor. And then I added, I made the building an L-shaped building. And I added sixty-four feet instead of the. And then, and the wall went, the wall on the back corner went from twenty-two feet to fifteen feet. And in the, in the L-shaped wall went down to twelve feet. So I think that, I mean, it's just something to consider. I, I certainly understand the exercise.
And I'm just sorry, just for the purpose of the record, because we're flipping from one, uh, expert to another. Uh, keeping both out here, but, uh, so this is a fact the engineer who remains under oath, Mr. Schell, yeah. Um, so which would, I imagine is more appropriate, I don't want to say more, but one of the two appropriate people, experts to address this inquiry, so. So please proceed.
No, I, I think the exercise of looking at alternative options. Uh, again, is something that we had, uh, looked at, um, tried to explore other avenues. Um, I agree that any type of L-shaped building, one does reduce potential disturbance in height of the wall on the east side, but I feel like it creates. Additional implications on the north side of the building, where we're now cutting significantly into that slope, into the trail. Um, that portion of the retaining wall that would run around any type of. L-shaped that went deep into the property is now. Um, say into the slope, ten, twelve, fifteen foot in height, now all of these ground floor units. Uh, all their windows are blocked by retaining walls, again, we're lessening the overall height of it, so it's one addressing. Some issues on one side, but creating additional issues, pushing the building further back into the site. Uh, more potential disturbance setting neighbors back behind it. Where now you have potential for looking down onto a roof area with condensers on it, I think it. It, it's solved, that's all, it helps address some issues while creating additional ones.
Um, I agree, one, one of the. A couple of the problems are, a couple of the issues, they're not problems. Is it reduces the width of the building as, as you look at it from two oh two, my book broke, because it goes from. Two hundred and, oh, two hundred and six, two hundred and sixty feet to two hundred and fifteen feet, so the. The width of, the mass of the building is decreased. And then, as I said, in the, I mean, I added, in my sketch, I added sixty-four feet, and I took off forty-four feet. If you, if you want to make it the same dimensions, and it was a positive impact of putting the community room at that corner. So maybe some sort of combination of the addressing these issues could be put forth. You know, if you don't need the sixty, sixty-four feet in depth, and you can only deal with the same. And then I, I left the width of, you know, the new area enough to get a double road, double level parking on underneath. So, and as I said, I put some thought into it, and I made some recommendations. But I'm, you know, this is like a value engineering assignment. Where you, you work with the applicant, you work with the layout, and you maybe, maybe this is not the optimum. Maybe the sixty-four feet would only be forty-four feet, and then you just, with all the interior layout, you. But I, you know, but basically, there's a center hallway that makes a ninety-degree turn and goes north. That was. That was my idea.
Uh, I'm looking at the, uh.
You just have on the screen.
Uh, that you had, and I'm looking at the elevations. Um, it looks like your, your ground elevation for the parking is at, uh, three-fifty point three-three. And the elevation behind the wall where the, um. Trash is, is, uh, three-fifty-three?
Yeah, the trash is about the same elevation as the ground for parking.
But, I mean, I thought about behind the wall. Yeah, whereas.
Right, the trash is, right, we're high about level there.
Yes. So if you did make an L-shaped building, the parking would actually be the part below grade there, depending on how far vacuumed it. So the first floor is above grade there. So if that L-shaped, i- if, again, if we're considering an L-shaped building. We're talking about, you know, how far we would have to go, you would have to go back, and then we would have the same repainting wall issue. Really, you wouldn't, it, it wouldn't be as drastic as it is on the, uh, on the east side.
Yeah, the, the height of the wall.
The property slopes.
Yes, you still have an instance where that wall is.
Ten, fifteen foot in height in your ground for windows or not, so it's now encompassing that whole ground floor as it will go around. Again, I, I, I understand and think that there's. Uh, potential positives as you work on scenarios of reconfiguring a building. Uh, but again, I think it, it also does create additional concerns as well where.
Yeah, again, right, I, I, I totally understand, and I, I, from my point of view, uh. I, I was thinking there was gonna be a little bit more. Engineering design changes to the plan from what we spoke about. Um, I, uh. You know, my, one of my concerns is that that wall, two-hundred-and-sixty feet straight across. Now you all, you have a, um, canopy that's over there, that's six feet away from the wall. Uh, it's gonna be dark. Is grass gonna grow there, it's like, you know, I just have issues with that, about creating that valid. I mean, you're talking about a wall taller than that, ten feet away. Um, with now a roof in there. The two-hundred-and-sixty-foot wall with no undulation at all, that's just perfectly flat, you have two. Stairwells that can either be pulled in or pushed out to give a little bit of design to it, or a little bit of something to that. Huge mess, um. Uh, again, I was hoping for something more, uh. So was I, so that's why I put pen to paper, to cat to paper. And came up with, and then. I'm not tied to this layout, I just looked at maybe there's a combination of your layout and what I proposed. Because I'm not an architect, so I couldn't tell you about the interior of the building. But I, I tried to take the same outside dimensions and come up with something that hopefully would address the. The mass visibility from, because we reduced it by approximately twenty percent in the width. And fifteen percent of the frontage, because there was a concern that the building was just too long.
Yeah, I mean, from, from an architectural standpoint, um, you know, we. A bar-shaped building, which this is, it's a really efficient, uh, shape. Uh, cost-wise, building-wise, um, I mean, I think we gave it a really elegant front. Whether the back is a little flat, we could always bump something in and out, but again. Uh, it's, it's a really efficient layout, the stairwells are at the ends, there's a certain means of egress distance that we have to meet. Uh, for fire purposes, and, you know, as you turn in a building, it's one, it's always possibly. Uh, and then to wrap the corner of the building, surround it like a mo, with a wall. Um, we thought that while that back corner was somewhat high. Um, I think we did address it by, you know, moving over the community room. Um, and maybe that front unit gets affected with the wall, but. Mostly everybody else will have more light and air, rather than turning and going deeper, digging into the, to the mountain.
I, that front corner is, I'm now, under this sketch, is only two and a half feet for the wall.
So I think there is many ways that.
Yeah.
Somebody could look at this, but the, the application was before the board at the time of preliminary and was approved, and then now we have. Tweaked it for the purposes of amended preliminary and final, but the, in the interim, um, we're addressing comments that we received at. The initial hearing and that were conditioned without completely starting over and redesigning the project. So this is an affordable housing project, it is in the borough's plan, um, it, there's importance in. In having this application before this board and having it approved, and, and I think that the applicant did address many of the comments, and. As you heard from our experts, we do believe that this is a good plan for this particular lot, we obviously are constrained by the slopes that are on the lot, but. Um, given the features of the property have done. The work in between the time of preliminary and this application to reduce the wall significantly, as, as you had heard, it was previously thirty-five feet, we heard the comment that that's. Not the size wall that this board or the borough wants, then we're able to reduce it by approximately twelve feet, so. Though there are other options for what this could look like, this is, um, what we saw as the most efficient option for this project and. In keeping with what was previously provided this board without going back to the drawing board and, and starting over.
And then I'd, I'd be compelled to add, uh, uh, so again, the board has all the information necessary to make an appropriate. Reasonable. Non-arbitrary, non-friscious, and non-unreasonable, you know, a reasonable decision. Uh, that, in addition to the board having given preliminary approval. Uh, to a project that among other things, had a wall that was thirty-five or so percent higher. As approved than it is now. Uh, it reduced it by about thirty-five percent, I think we're doing that math right. Um, the, uh, the law that governs this board, as, uh, council was just. Uh, referencing, uh, is in our housing only fair share plan. Uh, and, uh, it is consistent with the law, and, uh, it reads the borough of Burnsville. Uh, and this board, you know, situated, beginning of the development plan, as our governing, or, uh, zoning ordinance. Uh, excuse me, the housing only fair share plan and zone, zoning, giving our governing ordinance, the borough of Burnsville will focus on complying. With New Jersey Administrator Code five colon ninety-three dash ten for housing. Uh, regarding ensuring the elimination on unnecessary cost generating features. From municipal end-use ordinances, the municipality will eliminate development standards that are not essential to protect the public welfare. And will expedite open pram, quote, fast track, end quote, and brand approvals. Uh, slash denials on inclusionary, that's inclusionary development applications, this is a hundred percent affordable, no market rate. Uh, the borough will cooperate with developers of inclusionary, uh, developments. And by extension, these will assume all the more hundred percent affordable housing development applications. Uh, 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 in scheduling, et cetera, et cetera. Um, so in special meetings, et cetera, et cetera. So the point is, uh, uh, under affordable housing law and under, uh, the governing, uh, uh, provisions of our housing only fair share plan. Uh, that we're obligated to abide by, uh, cost generation is not, uh, something that you do when you're dealing with market rate. Applicant saying, uh, uh, I don't want it to be too expensive, I want my profit, et cetera, to be more. This is a situation where it's a hundred percent affordable housing, and we cannot. Uh, 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 require things that would be, quote-unquote, cost generative. I'm not saying that on the gap of the applicant, I'm saying that as the board's attorney. Uh, to make sure the board understands all the law. Uh, uh, and provisions of our own housing only fair share plan that govern what we do. Because that's my job to make sure you know what to do, when you do the job.
Well, if I could just add one more comment, this sketch. This value engineered sketch reduces the heights of a wall by about sixty, about forty percent. So that, I mean, the most expensive site. Element in this development, I would think, is the, is the walls. And, you know, if you can reduce the cost of the wall by thirty, forty percent of what was proposed, it's about half of what the. It's even less than half of what the original approval was, you know, in the thirties. I've got it down fifteen feet, when its latest submission had it about twenty-two feet. I just think that something to look at, just as a cost benefit, where you can save the, the cost of the site cost. And, and I'm just asking that you consider. Uh, a, a little bit different layout in the, maybe you don't put. The, the T or the extension to the back at sixty-four feet, if you put it at fifty feet or something less. And then you could, you can give and take. With all these elements.
If I may, uh, i- if what the board is considering, and I don't know, and I don't know what was gonna ultimately determine, but. If the board, uh, is considering the possibility of approving ultimately the application as proposed. Uh, with the condition that the applicant, uh, give consideration to, uh, uh, an alternative plan. Or somewhere in between what's proposed and an alternative plan, and it's determined by the applicant. That it is, of course, beneficial, and value-added, as, as one board member thinks it might be. Uh, uh, then the applicant can make the determination, uh, to do what is in the economic interest of the applicant. Um, but I don't know that the board should be guessing what's in the economic interest of the applicant, or more to the point, what is and isn't. Cost generative, for the, for the applicant, because he can't, uh, do something cost generative. I don't know if that's what the board is, or might be considering, but I guess I'm posing it to the applicant, that the applicant, uh, 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 would. Stipulated, the board so desired, uh, to, in, in, in the context of receiving approval. Uh to in in the in context of receiving approval this evening for the proposed plan. Uh uh having a condition that they will consider the alternative and they have the right, the applicant. Uh uh to proceed with the alternative if it's in their economic interest to do so and not cost generative.
And I think to to piggyback on on Mr. Warner's point. As as this is a one hundred percent responsible project. Economics is important because the town is a partner in this and will have to put the bill to any cost. Any cost savings would benefit not only the applicant, but the but the borough as well. And if the alternate plan does that, then achieves that purpose. Um to the benefit of both, because we're integrally tied to this project by virtue of the housing plan and the agreement that is made between the borough.
The bonding, it's more than that. It benefits the borough dramatically.
And that was my motivation.
Correct, but we don't have, unfortunately, we don't have all the information as we impose it. Without additional engineering and cost analysis in terms of relocating the the spaces, the parking and all that that goes into it. It's hard to determine. I'm not, I I think it has merit. I think there's an interesting thought here in terms of value engineering. I I appreciate, you know, it's. Not unknown that board members would like to see, you know, designs and that work in your mind better, but. I'm concerned about. The agreements that are in place. I think what Mr. Warner is suggesting. Works because you still have the opportunity. To implement something like this if it's beneficial to the borough economically and to the applicant. And it would be mutual. And and if it's good for one, it's good for both. If it's not good for one, ultimately it's not good for both. But there has to be an understanding that if they go with an alternate, they also have to pull the process over again.
With the site because the time is economically detrimental, both not to the applicant, but ultimately.
That the borough is aware. So we're trying to work out a solution here to eat, open the door to an alternative. If it's economically beneficial to the borough, but but not delaying the project. Such that, you know, it doesn't happen without substantial. Investment on the part of the borough, tax dollars. I make up the difference in in any funding that moves while we wait for all this. Engineering and architecture to be worked out.
As we addressed last time, and I'm sure the board remembers uh the facts on the ground are. Uh that the opportunities for low income housing tax credits are dissipating. Very quickly and we've been advised that the alternative is the borough puts the bill. So one hundred percent affordable, you're on the hook. So is this one. So uh 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 not only is money.
The answer, so I don't want to belabor this now. The answer is you, what you described, which is they're aware of this. They can investigate it at their option. If it's cost beneficial, they benefit, we benefit more if it's cost beneficial than they do, but they can investigate it at their. According to however they want to.
But here's under the scenario, the board.
It's not a part of the resolution.
Well, the board would be approving what's proposed, giving them the option of uh saving already money if they make that determination. Yeah. And that's something the board's considering. I just wanted to make sure that the applicant was stickly to it or else, you know, it's.
That we give them this plan.
Uh I assume the applicant always had, the applicant stipulated what I proposed, if it or what what the board made. He did.
He did. Yes, um so the applicant would stip- stipulate to that. Again, confirming that it's at the applicant's option to.
Right.
Investigate further and to make the determination.
I have sole discretion, but recognizing that it's mutually beneficial, the board's not.
Not.
Uh and and that it it benefits you, the board's comfortable, you'll 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 do that and it's a benefit for and the borough. Um so so the approval would be of the plan as is, if indeed that's ultimately what the board decides. So.
They should mark the plan and evidence.
Should you mark the plan?
The concept.
Did the uh uh the alternative concept plan as 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 that that's fine, we could call it. As working. Yeah, I I I know.
Yeah.
That's what I just wrote. I was just about to say, but that's okay. B B one's counsel to the board, not coming from the applicant. So B one is a uh a concept plan. Alternative concept plan. Uh and so that we have. A document that references the stipulation.
And the note.
I have one other thing coming back to the issue of the. Space in the back of the unit. You could. Consider. You know, you have the bump out back there. You could consider pushing the wall. Further into the hill. It'll be higher, but further into the hill to create more space where the community center entrances. Okay, just oh, think about it. In other words, it's, you know, kind of engineering or architect issues.
Yeah.
This is a thought, this, you may not care about. Two more feet back there.
And I'm available to. To help out.
Actually, we we don't.
No, we're not.
Wouldn't be appropriate, but but uh at least at this stage.
One thing to consideration. When I was a kid, I grew up in a apartment house with a place and my bedroom based an airship. And screening up to look up to see the blue sky isn't the way you wanna live. And I think to the extent these apartments. Face out onto a blank wall will have the same effect. I think you should consider the impact of any of these changes. Giving a better visual app in the winter, more fresh air and more sunlight. Not only on the profitability to the town and to the the um owner, but also. On the morals and health of the residents of these. You know, we're building portable housing. We should make it actually as livable as possible.
Is there a fence on top of the wall? Do you have to worry about that? Is there?
Yes, there would be a fence on top of the wall for wall protection.
All right, uh.
Is it black fence?
Are there any questions? I think we. The board and our professionals, are there any questions from the public? What?
The fence design will be not solid, black line of brackets.
The probably not aluminum, open piggytail on the top of the fence, on the top of the wall for fall protection, but open.
Open, so they're not a solid. Black, black fences that are open tend to disappear.
So that I make.
I just wanted to add on the reference chairman, sorry. I I count it as a condition.
So are there any questions of this witness from the public?
Or if I may, the chairman worked with the engineer since he gave additional testimony to the bottom.
Oh, and then, uh, I'm sorry, just a quick question on the six. That's the draw section plan. I I think it was a good idea moving to community room, but the question is. Do you need those full height windows? It doesn't do anything for the second floor, it was, but. You need the full height windows in that back corner. And they be, and that part of that community room be very well. Like a transient back window or something.
Still got the door there.
Yeah, the door, which.
Or.
Would, I think. To your point of trying to really grade up outside to lower the height of the wall, is that?
Yes, exactly. I mean, it's gonna be a cost factor, you know, the sixteen foot high wall where she's twenty five.
If we're able to do something in that area by not having those. Windows, that's certainly something we could look at and see if that's something we can make work in that area.
It also, it does increase the the cost of that wall because it becomes a retaining wall now along around the community room. Right, have to bring up the concrete. Can't do just stick ring. This is essentially a slab on grade.
Uh oh, the foundational wall for the.
Yeah.
But we can look at it and see if there's anything we could do in that area to massage. Grade would be a further impressed that wall. It wouldn't be a slab on grade. You're actually have parking below, but.
Yeah. And then like a step wall, step wall that has to come up higher.
Hmm, yeah, or even something where you you step the wall back. Once or twice or something like that. You you the wall goes higher, but. Instead of ten feet away, it's twelve or fourteen feet at that, at least at the second floor, right? Especially at that area where the community room is in the back and the the overhang here on the front door there, from the back door there. Um we need to be mindful of our overall disturbance. You know, we're. Right out of our one acre threshold, so anything that we're doing in the back, you know, massaging disturbance. We wanna make sure that we stay within that. Obviously, we go above an acre, that triggers all sorts of different stormwater components that are. Uh we talked about cost prohibitive to a project. That's something we'll keep in mind. I think we have some variations in that jog of the water. If we can kind of maneuver that around that blockway area, that's certainly something that we'll do. We'll take a look at uh as we try to kind of fine tune this design.
And and another motivation I had pulling the wall to away from the property line. If you've got like a twenty two foot wall only a few feet off the property line. And the way you design that wall and tie it back from falling down. And maybe a banner. A batter, I mean. You know, this way you have is you have much more width to deal with. Between the edge of the wall and the property line.
And that's why we make sure we don't get, uh we can make sure a copy of B one makes it to our board clerk. The board secretary, I suppose.
There's a second, I'm just gonna name it. All right, well, you you look at that. It's a construction trade off and that's cost and however you construct the wall and so forth, so. Fine.
So no.
All right, any questions from the, no more from our folks. Any questions from the public? None.
Is that your last question?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Did you go right?
Public questions for, okay, so. Any comments from the public? Um if there are. Mind that and this time you get sworn in.
We, thank you. You swear to God or permit, that's what you're about to give the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, Mr. Duck.
Thank you. Um I just wanna say I uh. I get that trail quite often, uh little trail, it's great trail and I appreciate the work that the applicant did and. Keeping access to. My, a couple of comments on how it lays out when you get to that trailhead. We have a sidewalk coming one way. When you're coming down that hill, and I obviously I don't know what the um. Aspect's going to be when there's a a building there, but right now, um. You know, when when you get to the bottom from from that way, you're kind of coming like out out of the light and being in the woods. If you have that um sidewalk uh that just takes out laughing goes into your um private property. People are here over there. Um one of the, one of the issues that we've had, well, and coming back to the parks and recreation plan. Um one of the things people are asking for, haven't asked for, and I I believe it's the board's express intent to give them is is connectivity. Um within our, um you know, between our green spaces, between our residential areas and getting to the parks. Um so I would respectfully suggest, um you know, like um Mr. Shelby said. You you don't wanna encourage people to um become into your property. Um have something there um to say, you know, residents only. I don't, I don't know, it has to be a gate, um but you know, something to signify. You go this way, you're going to um uh the the residence area. You don't want to do that. And just I guess it's a good for Mr. Sable's firm is when you're looking at the landscape thing for that um tent with um easement. Um really something, a lot of problems we have with our with our easements and connectivity is we have easements. They're just not marked. People don't know about them. Um so really kind of make it clear that this is a. Place where the public's allowed to be and can be and should be if they wanna get to the trail. Um also on that um point, I missed the last meeting, um so I don't know whether it was mentioned, but I do remember it was mentioned last year. When this application was first here, uh going back to connectivity was. The idea that we wanted to be able to bring these residents um and 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 the residents further up the hill there. Uh down to Rose Bowl and to the nerve new nerve line trail when the dam is removed and and uh and that's reestablished. So I, there was conversation about maybe the applicant taking them all and running with it on. Getting a crosswalk or cross two oh two there that would connect the um residents. To the Rose Bowl Big Bowl Field, get, you know, kids over there, a place to play. Uh as well as the access to the trail that will then run behind Borough Hall over there and um and and up to the park. So. I don't know whether that was discussed or whether that's something that um. Could be done, but I I don't know, I just feel like having more connection, more people, you know, asking, um you know, sometimes our phone calls to D O T. They don't get returned as quickly as maybe other people's. I don't know. This is something I thought I'd mention. But yeah, thank you for uh for your work on the on the easement.
Could the experts, um would that be the responsibility of the town, for example, like uh to mark with a sign? Uh that is, would that be on the town as opposed to the applicant? Um in the future.
I guess technically, because the applicant, the applicant can do it with the township, with the borough's permission or was the borough could do it.
It should be the responsibility that we sign it, the borough wants to be sure.
What I'm hearing is it needs to be a clear delineation to US public in most parts, so that it doesn't trespass.
At least.
And and are directed like a wayfinding sign to the proper trail, but I think that's in everybody's.
Does it make sense? It may make sense uh if the applicant so stipulates to have that subject to the uh the negotiation discussion. With the township committee, uh excuse me, borough committee. Borough council, my apologies. Uh they 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 uh, that's why you say everybody, with the borough council to to uh uh. To decide who and how and where. That something applicants can stipulate to as far as the demarcation for the benefit of the public and. Uh yeah, when we work out the point, the condition, we'll we'll design it and we will keep that in mind when we vote with the applicant. So say so.
Yes.
So thank you for doing, I would just go for the yes.
Any more questions from?
What is the status of the D O T application?
Uh there's pending applications in D O T. They provided some comments, um. There is some discrepancies between the applications that originally being signed by the applicant and not by the borough. They were on a traffic control plan and reviewed the stormwater. Um so that stuff is still pending. A couple of details, taper on the. Uh new proposed curving along uh Mambro Road. Um all items that we're sending back to them to to get back into their court, uh to continue that uh approvals process.
You need D O T approval to do your financing?
We need D O T approval to close out our board compliance. Uh before it would get to the stage of construction, but. Um well, my question is, does that hold up your ability to draw from the available time?
So we have to complete resolution compliance and then have our final set of construction drawings in order to file for financing. So all of the conditions inclusive of outside agency approvals have to be.
You can pull ability from the D O T. It's pending. They don't, you know, the regulations required for a C L. The D O T regulations.
Working for this, uh we'd never issue any kind of building without D O T. Either a letter of no interest or a permit. Because God forbid something happens and they they've been known with all projects, so. Because that's a condition approval, all other governmental agencies, that's the standard thing, so. We'd love to help you out, but that's one that, you know, you gotta deal with.
I'll say D O T regulations say that they can. You you can pull a building permit, but you don't, you need a C L for the D O T.
And that would have to be a specific condition.
Okay.
For us to sign.
Yeah.
So you say it's at the applicant's risk, then.
Yeah.
Then that that should be clear in the resolution because we're tied to the condition of the resolution.
And whatever the funding grants, good, there are any number of considerations that. If that's what they needed, a building permit, they could get.
I may not be of any help, I'm just saying, if if you, they need to be authorized to do that.
I'm just saying, those are D O T regulations.
Okay. Then then if it's addressed in the resolution and. You know, we can, we can require the C L which will help them. Uh I would suggest you have to get that first. I didn't bring you on.
No, it matters. Well, it's it's a risk.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the timing may, you know, you may need it for timing.
So I think part of the challenge is that when you file these applications for financing, the H M F A looks at their checklist of items. And one of those is that you um completed your resolution compliance with the condition. You have to have it. If it impacts the design of the plan in any way, um they're gonna ask us about it, so.
So we wouldn't be doing them any favors, that the bottom line?
It likely would not help. It like we we wouldn't be able to bypass it with with finding a thing anyway.
Okay, uh.
Yeah, we we close the public.
Uh Chris did now.
And.
And so we're we're in for summary.
Summation if any.
Sure, I will um keep it brief. So as we stated earlier this evening, we are here for amended. Sure, I will, um, keep it brief. So as we stated earlier this evening, we are here for amended preliminary and final site plan. Relating to this, uh, one hundred percent municipally sponsored affordable housing project. Uh, we believe that we have heard the comments from the board and your professionals and have returned with plans that address those comments. Um, providing a great building for these units, um, on this property. We believe that we have reduced the retaining wall sufficiently in order to provide enough light and open air and also make it constructible. Um, we've addressed the trail easement and will continue to do so with the borough so that we can finalize the actual paperwork for that easement. Um, we, as you've heard through testimony this evening, also. Uh, we're able to address comments from your fire official to make sure that the, the building and the plans are, um, safe from their perspective as well. So overall, uh, we think this is a great project and it will certainly satisfy the, uh, affordable housing requirement as to this property. And at the overall, um, per second of, of three overall sites, so. Um, we hope that the board looks favorably on this application.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, I want to confirm with Council the relief of being requested on the board before the board deliberates and decides whether or not to grant. Certainly, the, the amended preliminary and final site plan approval and the deviations I have are in my notes. Uh, please correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, we still have a front yard setback sixteen point six. Feet versus thirty-five feet then along the water.
Yeah.
I do still have an exception for parking setback from property line five point two feet versus ten feet.
No, that was eliminated.
Thank you. Uh, parking setback from Mindbrook Road fourteen feet versus twenty-five feet. Where are we? Uh, and then the only other one I have. So Sabo work, applicants, council, please put another one on than this one. Uh, the, uh, is the one with the deceiving, which is the, uh, strict construction, uh, 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 relief from the strict construction. Of the affordable housing provision to the extent it would require such relief for a superintendent in that part.
Yes, and also signage.
Which is effectively roughly the same, if not the same, as, uh, the exception, uh, the relief that is granted to.
Third experience.
Avenue, application, same size.
It's a little bit larger just based on the, the limit of this particular road, um, and.
Yeah. Four and a half foot tall, by ten foot in length. In width. In width, I guess, yeah, right?
And the location.
And the location in the front yard, right?
I just ask a question, a clarification of the sign. Uh, you have a generic name that says community, something. Have you named that, um, building there?
Not yet.
So it's not just going to be the number, the address, it will be. Snappy.
Like today, we're.
So it'll be a name, an address, and then R P M community.
And then one on the.
As an R P M community.
Was that, is that everyone's agreement that those are the?
There's a list.
The fine setback was also. Yeah, yeah. Well, just in the front yard, is there also a sign setback? Oh, well, zero.
The description sign.
Right.
And then we capture this part of that.
Yep. Okay, so and the board has, so the board now knows the relief being requested. If it's a grant, I'll assume it's a grant with all the stipulated due conditions unless you wanna not acquire any of them. Uh, let me know if you take any out. Uh, but, uh, that's what I would understand. There was pretty, uh, belief granted to be. Pardon? Uh, any stipulated due condition, if the board doesn't want it, it's a little stipulated due condition.
Mr. Warner. We also have, um, that our exception, potential exception from R S I is that they require utility pole.
I was gonna ask that.
Mention for, uh, and I'm sorry for the utility pole, not the, yeah, I talked about the.
If they require a new utility pole on our side.
Oh, instead of going underground, yes. Yeah, you know, that one we said, yeah, that didn't. Okay, does the board familiar with that one as well?
Same reason.
And what about a, a flexibility on the rear setback?
Oh, you wanna leave, uh, uh, event that the, in the event that they were all turned around, yeah.
Which could also result in slope disturbance. That may need for me.
Yeah, we could still give them.
Step back and slope disturbance to the extent required. Uh, if the alternative layout is.
Beneficial.
And, and the C two benefits argument for that would be the savings in costs and the better, uh, designs that satisfies, uh. Purpose, that means, uh, but, um, with better design alternatives. So there's.
Affordable visual environment, correct.
And, uh, that will, that would cover that.
Right.
So still a better lawyer, uh, as a planner than I am a planner as a lawyer.
Whatever, we know.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so.
I did, is that all? That's all the relief, and again, I'll assume it's with all the stipulated due conditions, every sort of approval of four out of six or more, uh, for a passage. Uh, this hundred percent affordable housing project, uh, pursuant to our settlement agreement, housing all in fair share plan and these all in organs.
Okay, so you need a motion, right? Who wants to move? Criminal delusion.
Um, the resolution. Because that, that, I think that is a motion to grant with all stipulated due conditions.
What was the condition?
Zazarena, thank you. Yes, I can figure it.
The second from?
Second.
Karen seconds.
Hey, Ms. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Horowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Simmo?
Yes.
Mr. Walden?
No.
And Mr. Zazarena?
Yes.
The motion carries?
Five to one.
Thank you very much.
Good. Don't go anywhere. Uh, if you. Does anyone want to break for nine thirty? No, no, there are no hands. That's clear, yes. Everyone else, okay, alright, so we're applying to the airport. We'll take a break until nine thirty.
Yes.
And so we're ready whenever you are. To hear, and I'll announce, we are now ready to hear the Mindbrook Road and Neuro Renewal Association. Uh, they're, the third, uh, which is for eighteen Mount Airy Road. Uh, it's block one twenty-four lot one. Uh, they're seeking amended preliminary and final measure of affordable multifamily site. Being some feedback in July of this year. And for those that don't know, this is the really airman, uh, I pardon my language, it's the train tracks. I thought just over the grid as you're moving. So we are ready.
And, Mr. Chairman, as applicants about to, you know, get the opening, I just want to remind the board, everyone, that, uh. Uh, the notice was provided for, uh, December fourteenth, I believe, at which point we, uh, found that the door, the notice was sufficient. Uh, and Board Head Jurisdiction carried it without further notice to January eleventh. And then again to, uh, seeing the January twenty-fifth. Both without further notice, and we do have the appropriate extension of time to act for at least the end of this month. Uh, uh, and I believe, uh, uh, once, once we get rolling, I think we might need to. Confirm that we can, uh, the application being complete for both our planner and our year. Uh, and then we can proceed to court it, but I won't steal applicants' councils.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Good evening again. Um, so we are now here, uh, on behalf of the applicant, for the purposes of the record, Nicole Madzak, M A G D Z I A K. Of the law firm, Dave Pitney, um, Mindbrook Road Urban Renewal Associates. L P is seeking amended preliminary and final site plan approval related to the property at eighteen Mount Airy. Which is designated as block one twenty-four lot one on the borough's tax map. As some members of the board, uh, may recall, this application received preliminary approval by resolution October thirteenth of twenty twenty-two. To remove the existing paved parking lot that's currently on the property and to construct two, a two, two-story multifamily dwellings. For a total of twelve units. The amended application that's before you this evening continues to seek approval for two multifamily buildings. Each to contain six units. We're proposing eight, two-bedroom units and four, three-bedroom units in this particular development. Um, we are also, um, proposing. Associated parking and landscaping, sidewalks, so other related site improvements. What you'll note from the testimony that you hear this evening is that there are several, um, I'll call them main changes. That were made to the plans between the time of preliminary and now this amended preliminary and final application. Um, the building was actually slid back within the lot. So as you may recall, there was an easement shown on the plans initially, a potential easement to New Jersey American Water. We have since been notified that that easement will no longer be located in that particular spot. So we were able to move the building back away from the road, which was actually a comment that we received at the time of preliminary. We also relocated the drive aisle as far south as possible on the site. And we eliminated any windows facing the neighboring property owner, which was a concern at the time of preliminary. So, uh, with that, I'd like to. One, address completeness and make sure that the, um, board and its professionals consider the application to be deemed complete. And then to the extent that that is determined, we have two witnesses this evening. One is our engineer, Kevin Shelley, and our architect, Aaron Puma.
Mr. Chairman, I took the position that this is amended preliminary final and that the details. That were not provided, they agreed to provide part of the preliminary rules. We already granted both waivers. So I figured, let's proceed with the application. I felt that that is sufficient to mention. It, Mr. Brighton, I have two things that we wanted to see weighed technically, and I can address that.
I, I carried three items out for, in the original, you know, completeness. When you view, uh, that the applicant agreed to do. Concourse within a hundred feet of property, we did have a question on whether, but the height of retaining walls were going to be based on the confirmation as was provided. Structures within three hundred feet, I know there's an arrow map on the plan. Uh, hard to see the adjacent structures from that, I'd be very glad to be increased inside. The other one is the property on the list. Now, usually there's a property on the list on the plans. They agreed to that prior, you know, it was. Haven't been done, but again, they lose their.
Certain one of the property, what?
Property owners list.
Oh, property owners.
Anybody on the plan?
Traditionally, it's on the plan. Obviously, there's a list because it's submitted with the application. You know, this is given and it's reviewed. Your jurisdiction is established for hearing. Uh, but it's, it's a good thing to have on the plan because then you can observe, you know, who's attracted, but also if you have any conflicts that have been going into. I know every board I know likes to see that, so.
And for the benefit of the board members and any members of the public, these, these are, this is item four on page two. Mr. Brighton, these, all the eighteen, twenty twenty-three memo, as, as I see it. And, uh, those are the three checklist items are there. And so.
They were previously drafted from the preliminary here. They were drafted, I, you understand, maybe you put on the plan, so that should be carried if the board's going. Even if they wait, it should be carried as a condition.
In your opinion, can the board hear the application and have those three conditions of approval?
I have no issue with that.
Okay. Good.
Okay, so does the board deem the application complete then, and, uh, recognizing that, that one more of those conditions would be conditioned or approved?
I, all fair, I, any opposed?
You've been deemed complete, I think we can continue with the chair's permission.
First.
Thank you. And so with that, we'd like to introduce our first witness, Kevin Shelley.
Now, since, since a new hearing, now, Mr. Shelley, I would, uh, while I swear you, and I'll ask everyone else who's gonna testify. Allow me to swear to the minute until they are board professionals, which is able, Mr. Brighton, so please raise your right hand. Uh, do all of you swear to God or affirm that the testimony is about, uh, that you're about to give the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Um, Mr. Shelley, just because this is a new application, can you just provide the board with your, um, background education? And confirm that your license is fresh?
Sure, I am a licensed professional engineer in New Jersey since two thousand twelve. My license is current and in good standing. Um, testifying for various boards across the state, uh, previously from this board.
Including, uh, as long ago as five minutes.
We'd like to offer him as an expert in engineering.
Except.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, at the beginning here, I would just like to, um, mark a couple exhibits. That I would like to use this evening. Um, the first. We can call as exhibit A one. Which is a colored site rendering of the proposed development. It is dated January eleventh. Twenty twenty-four. Um, I have exhibit A two. Which is a colored site rendering of the application that was presented to the board for preliminary approval. That plan is dated August. Fourth. Twenty twenty-two. And I also have another exhibit, A three, which is just an updated layout plan. Um, based off of the, uh, changes. Um, that were made to the plan recently, uh, as it was indicated that the New Jersey American Water easement has been taken away. So we made a couple of modifications to the plan that is shown in front of board. Uh, again, that is a updated layout plan dated January eleventh. Twenty twenty-four.
And, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, if I could ask for clarification, uh, am I correct that, that when you say the easement was taken away? That there may not have been an easement actually ever located, uh, J C, uh, J C, you know? Uh, N J A W, uh, New Jersey American Water, uh, on the site, there was perhaps a, a, an expectation that it might be located there. But that if I understood correctly, but actually it will not be located there, it will be located elsewhere off-site, is that accurate?
Correct, it was a proposed easement at the time of the initial concept planning on the site. We were advised by the borough that they've been. Were negotiating with New Jersey American Water to provide an easement through this property and we were asked to work around it. Um, which we had tried to do every second way, um, despite, for a small property, twenty-five foot wide easement was pretty impactful to our development options. Um, so again, we were advised that the borough was no longer pursuing. Uh, an easement through this property with New Jersey American Water, uh, and so the plan was updated accordingly.
It was on the plan, so it updated the plan.
Yeah, oh, yeah, no, absolutely, yeah. More, more than the nomenclature, but just so everybody understood, it actually never even existed.
Correct, it was always a proposed easement.
Yeah, it's not being moved offsite, it's just not originally being moved on-site, it's, it's, it's starting elsewhere.
So, the subject property is located on the eastern side, uh, of Mount Arid Road, just to get everybody to familiarize with the project. Again, bust the railroad property to the north. Get currently a municipal parking lot. Um, it is point seven four feeters in size. It is a flag shaped or panhandle shaped, depending on. Your nomenclature here. Um, uh, and it is located in the affordable housing A H six zoning district. The applicant proposes to construct two two-story apartment buildings totaling twelve units. All of which are low to moderate income affordable housing units. Um, which are permitted use in the A H six zone. At, I will use exhibit A two now to show. At the time of the preliminary hearing, the design for the property had the drive aisle. And the northernmost ended site abutting the railroad property. Uh, again, it was trying to respect New Jersey more, American Water easement that was proposed at the time. With the buildings pushed to the far southern end of the property. Um. Main concern at the time was. The drive aisle and its location to the overpass. Over the railroad tracks. Better. I think you ran out of battery. Um, at, at the top of the plan, uh, there were concerns about line of sight. Um, and, and visibility concerns from the site entrance. Uh, so the drive aisle was located on the northern end of the site. Closer to the overpass over the railroad tracks than currently exists today for the municipal apartment lot. Um, it was both comments from the board as well as comments we received from Somerset County. Um, and the recommendation was, and what we portrayed to the board at the time of preliminary was we would uh, come up with an alternative concept that took this drive aisle, push it as far south away from the railroad crossing, uh, as possible to give as much line of sight looking that way as possible. Um, and that is what we have done, again, flipping back to exhibit A one. No, not exhibit, that's exhibit A one. Um, so again, the drive aisle property is now located as far south as we can. Uh, you can see in the bottom left corner here, there's an existing uh, utility easement for transformer on the property. Uh, the proposed drive aisle is pushed right up against that easement. Our parking spaces are pushed right up against that easement to try to match for nice the space. Um, the parking, the drive aisle comes in past the first building, uh, turns ninety degrees. We've got parking spaces up against the rear sixteen building. And the other parking spaces, uh, located, uh, along southern property line here. The main change from the plans that are, that were submitted to the board as part of the amended and preliminary, amended preliminary and final application uh, is now the removal of that proposed New Jersey American Water easement, uh, which previously and on the plans in front of you, took this first building and pushed it right up on the drive line. Uh, not ideal, but we were trying to work within the constraints of that American Water easement. Uh, without the easement, the building shape was reconfigured a bit. The building was pushed back from the prop, uh, from the drive aisle now. Uh, so it is now eleven feet back from the drive aisle. There's no need for variance relief. Um, for a internal roadway proximity to one building there. Um, so we're able to eliminate that one condition. Um, and really it creates a better flow, uh, for the development. Uh, we've got parking spaces located along the southern property line. Um, similar as the time of the preliminary application, this site uh, along with all the other sites that we've discussed for the affordable housing plan, uh, requires retaining walls to flatten the site in order to, uh, create a development head for, for both buildings. So along the southern property line, uh, the eastern property back behind building two and along the northern property line, along the railroad tracks, uh, are retaining walls. The walls in total. I'm sure I've given you the best information here. Um, the northern wall will be maximum height of five feet. And there'll be a solid vinyl privacy fence installed on top. Eastern wall back behind building number two is about two feet in height. And again, there will be a six-foot vinyl privacy fence on top. And the southern wall along here will have a maximum height of four point seven feet. There will be a guide rail installed between these parking spaces that abut, uh, the retaining wall. And then again, a six-foot solid vinyl privacy fence will be installed behind the guide rail on top of the wall. Um, the privacy fence will provide visual screening for many type of headlights that are parked in these spaces. So they are not impactful to the neighbor. Um, the, um, again, so we're talking about the retaining walls. They're five feet and under, uh, the development site is on the high side as opposed to the mine brook property that we just discussed where that was located on the low side of the retaining walls and those walls would be impacting, uh, the residential units. Um, these subject properties on the high side of, of all the retaining walls. Um, so that is the wall design is not impacting the, the residents. Um, again, an updated application will submit it back to the county for additional feedback. Uh, the county has requested additional survey work in both directions along, um, Mount Arid Road, uh, which we've, uh, obtained. In all likelihood, based off of still, again, the, the drive aisle is as far south as possible. We can't push it any further, but in all likelihood, there's still not going to be the appropriate site distances from the drive aisle looking over the railroad crossing, um, further north, which would mean that we're expecting the, the county would limit the turning movements leaving the site. There will be a no left turn out of the site. You'll be required to turn right um, out of the property, uh, based off of the, the visibility. Again, there's not much we can do with the overpass, uh, and the apartment and fencing located along the railroad there. Um, so that we believe that in all likelihood is going to be the outcome of our conversations with county.
Are, are they going to require pre-channel logs?
Uh, I, I don't have that information from that. They haven't provided that. We believe though, just based off of the additional survey information that they requested and what we found during that survey, that there's not going to be an appropriate line of sight from here to there. So we don't believe that they're going to permit there to be that left turn movement out of the site. I don't have any other feedback from the county at this point besides, um, besides their request for additional information.
Where is the current? I mean, the current parking lot?
Current parking lot, I can, the, the driveway to the current parking lot is a little bit further to the north.
This is an improved sight line over what's there.
It's an improvement from what is there now, and that is the argument that the, the traffic, well, yes, the argument is the traffic generated by twelve units compared to what a municipal parking lot is, is much, much less substantial.
Right.
But again, in all likelihood, we want to make sure that there's a safe, um, safe maneuverability out of the site, and that's why we believe the likelihood that it's stable limited to, to not permit a left turn out of the site.
You want to make a left turn, you're going to have quite a preference. You're going to have to go down Anderson Road, make a left on Newell Street, make a left.
You, you've got the ability to turn down.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize, but as the board knows, uh, it's a hearing, we can't have conversations on the day. It just has to be testimony and back and forth, one individual speaking at a time.
All right, well, you, you obviously know, today it's a worse condition than what you're proposing and, uh, but they have the option saying, well, it's not quite, whatever, they're not so big on.
Correct. Well, we, we, we made the application, we've made our points and analysis. At the end of the day, it's the county's jurisdiction and as to what happens with the turning movements from the strikeway. We've improved them to the maximum extent that we can, um, and that's where the application is at.
And what about left turns then? Have they mentioned that?
They have not mentioned that.
Can't get in anyway. That's okay. Sorry, we're, we, we live here, so we know the problem. Keep going.
Um, in the application, uh, we are proposing eighteen parking spaces, uh, for the twelve units. That is a parking ratio of one and a half spaces per unit. Uh, RSIS requires twenty-four parking spaces with a ten percent reduction for the EV. So the total required for the property is twenty-one. And again, eighteen spaces are being closed, uh, which will require variance as well as a de minimis exception from RSIS.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, just on that one item, if I recall correctly, Mr. Zabel correctly from wrong. But more importantly, I think I, I, I stole that memory from something Mr. Zabel told me. But there is something built in to the definition of that parking requirement as well as part of, call correctly, RSIS.
Yes.
Uh, and, and that is, uh, uh, an exception for proximity to, uh, 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 downtown and/or transit uh, oriented developments, you know, railroad, et cetera, et cetera. That might be applicable for the board to consider, again, if I recall correctly, not so, not only in the context of variance relief, but also in the context of if a variance is even deemed necessary by the board because the board has flexibility. I hope I got that close to right.
Yes, page three of my report, section twenty-eight, dash twenty-one, point seventy-two, B, talks about relaxation of plan requirements. Uh, where the applicant burns on the apple to demonstrate the board satisfaction that the standards can be reduced. And, and the standards are derived from the RSIS, and it talks about uh, proximity to availability, for example, of transit. If that's viable, you know, uh, it's that issue that the applicant should address that as a part of the variance.
And if I made the, Mr. Zabel, am I correct that if they, the board can consider that, face the prominent opposition situation, both in the context of whether the variance relief should be granted, but also to the extent the variance relief is, I don't know if it's another way of saying it on semantics, but, but it, it, it is, uh, uh, or, or the requirement is alleviated so that perhaps even the variance relief is not necessary.
That is correct. That is also in my, yeah, yeah, no, that's a sort of a.
You can determine that with hip empty hip full. It's all same.
Well, the board can determine based on proper testimony that the variance is not required.
It just is a further statement, RSIS is statewide while in home open, you know, require the same amount of parking ways to do it to experiment.
Exactly. So RSIS commits ultimate apartment standards based off of a variety of different aspects. Um, household characteristics is one of them. And the second one that I'd say is applicable to this site is location of available mass transit. The fact that train station is four mile away, five mile walk to the site is a huge bonus. Five minutes, no, five mile, quarter mile away. Um, but the main aspect is household economics here, and we're talking about affordable housing. Um, the we have worked on hundreds of affordable housing projects across many different municipalities across the state. Um, RPM has thousands of affordable housing units within their portfolio that they own and maintain and manage. There are instances where we've had to develop sites uh, at a hundred percent affordable housing developments following RSIS requirements. And it ends up being a massive sea of vacant parking spaces that are never used that would be better purpose as green space. Um, in almost every instance, one and a half spaces per unit for family development is the maximum that they see in terms of highest occupancy. Um, and that's not even counting for developments that have the availability of mass transit. We're talking about suburban sites that we have that one and a half spaces is the maximum that you find. It's just not, the economics of affordable housing are different compared to a market rate site uh, development where some of the units have, where everyone has a car or people have more than one car. The reality is on affordable housing sites, some people won't have a car. Many people will not have two vehicles. The one and a half spaces per unit for affordable housing development falls well in line with um, what RPM sees as they manage all their properties. Um, it's in line with, with what we found on over affordable housing projects that we've worked on all across the state. That one and a half spaces for a family site, regardless of the availability of mass transit, is more than adequate. But again, for this particular site with the location and the availability of that transit, that's an extra bonus, um, for this property as well.
And Mr. Shelley, our planner will also support that in his testimony or as well as part of the planner.
Well, you're, you're from an engineering perspective, but maybe it's appropriate, Mr. Uh.
I can go as a planner if, if you.
That is, that has been my experience as well. There's certain demographic differences between bootyary, hundred percent developments where uh, we're noticing that the parking standards are over are, are greater than, uh, for the reasons that Mr. Shelley has, uh, testified. So I could infer that that's been my experience and that's what we've observed.
What's the green, uh, box in the center, the lower, the south center, what is the green left angle? What is that?
That's just a small curved island that separates the last parking space. Um, this area here is, uh, an area for vehicles to pack up. Um, out of these parking spaces for the trash truck as it pulls in to be able to have an avenue to K-turn and get their way out. Uh, this is just a small grass median that's in the way, so it's not all asphalt.
What's the bump back? The, the little bump, uh, to the right of it, what's that?
Again, that's a backup space for a vehicle parking here. You want at least five feet from that vehi, from the end of that parking space for that car to be able to back out out of their space and be able to make that maneuver if they need help. So it's a turnaround space for vehicles as well as the, the trash truck as it navigates the site so that it's not ending up in a scenario where it's trying to back out. Um, it could pull in, pick up the trash, back into that area, you know.
So I need value engineering too, so let me get to it.
Okay.
Give you two more parking spaces.
Two more parking spaces and that's.
And I don't see explicitly that you define the one what amounts to a van accessible space. Um, it's supposed to be eleven feet. Why? You see the slash, the, the, the hatch.
Yes.
The hatch section is always five feet by code.
Yep.
The, if it's van accessible, it's eleven feet, which you've got the space for.
Right. We typically show all of our spaces at nine foot, then we add that extra, and then at the end, once we finalize the details, that island shifts down to five feet.
Yeah, and it also has to be twenty-two feet deep, so you've got to have, allow for that in your access way. So.
Do, do we, do we have that?
Uh, again, the, the, the building here is not near the front setback. If this building needs to shift forward to the additional depth, we, we can.
There's a way to do it. Like I said, I can get into more spaces.
Yeah, that, that, I was just getting confirmation on the record that they can do it feasible.
They're, they're, they're able to, but they have to know they need to.
Yeah, understood, yeah.
To accomplish it.
But your site plan shows a different, shows the parking space, shows the flash area that you know, the parking space to the south.
Correct. Yeah, this, this crosswalk across here has been shifted. Uh, the handicap accessible space has been narrowed as well.
What is your handicap obligation? I mean, clearly, you could, when, once you have the five, the eleven feet, which is that'll be
Yep.
which is a van accessible and the five foot hash, the space next to it.
Will comply as well.
Be eight feet.
Yes, you need at least eight, these spaces.
Would be a second ADA. Do you, how many?
You only require one.
You only need one. Does it, it has to be van accessible.
Yes.
And I, it also has to be EV, right?
So that's where there's the new EV rules. We found that the short answer is we have the flexibility to make this an additional handicap accessible, non-EV space.
Yeah.
To make sure that it complies with the EV rules, the ADA rules.
Okay. No, I, I know you've got a lot of pretend, just saying, I can get two more spaces for you, so then it becomes the minimums or whatever. You're doing one point five. You can get two more. Okay, keep going. The other, oh, by the way, when you were explaining the shortcomings of the first plan?
Yes, the first.
It obscurely had you got out of your car and you walked around the building to get to your front entrance. So it was totally un.
There, there was several shortcomings of the plan to drive work within all those constraints.
Yeah, you can do it.
The parking wasn't great, the circulation, none of it was ideal.
No.
I think this plan greatly improves all of those shortcomings. It improves the visibility, uh, uh, the intersection to the best, to the maximum extent that it can. Um, so again, I think this is a much improved plan versus what was originally shown to the board, and we told you we were going to do these things and we believe that we followed through with.
And the retaining wall on the north edge is not the kind of retaining walls we've been talking about. It's a retaining wall that lets you build two line, right?
Yes, we are the high side.
High side and filling in the retaining wall.
Yep.
The other one is the reverse of it.
Yes, mine broke is a completely different type of.
No, you know.
Yep.
It's, it's, you're filling into the general, okay.
And another question about the county, county, I believe has, this is a so what, what is the right lane and what, the most right lane?
The, I think, Mount Arid. From Mount Airy.
Yeah, Mount Airy, I believe it was sixty six feet is the. Request, um where does sixty six? So we've we've. The that was in the county's initial review, it was to provide a right of way dedication. We countered that with an easement along the property frontage. Uh in lieu of um the dedication which they agreed to. I'm gonna zoom in so everybody can see it on here.
Me- meaning the county accepted the easement as opposed to the dedication, correct?
Correct, yeah, a dedication then starts to trigger all sorts of impacts, a building of coverages, setback issues. So the county agreed to take uh an easement along the frontage. Um in lieu of right of dedication.
So thirty three feet from center line, they're actually.
Yeah.
And that's where the pushes are.
Correct, yeah, the improvements here, there's a dash line on here, this line in the front is the current property line. Uh this dash line here is the new easement that would be dedicated to the county if they. For whatever reason decided they could ever widen the road there and had enough.
There's a transformer on the right side of the easements, the correct side, by the side of.
No.
It is.
The transformer would not be impacted, the signage would not be impacted, then we'll get into.
Transformer's fine.
Transformer's fine, yeah. Then, while we're on the topic, uh a monument sign is proposed uh at the front of the property. Uh.
Variance relief.
Variance relief is required. Uh sign, uh size, it is four and a half feet tall by seven and a half foot long. The sign area itself, two and a half foot by six foot.
She's not going too fast through there.
Is it on the, is it on the southwest?
Located on the southern corner there.
Okay.
So the.
I wish I had the little rep.
And it are, the base is two foot by seven and a half foot with a missionary veneer to match the buildings.
It's at the easement line?
It's at the easement line, which in that area is ten foot back from the mountain area to the frontage, but it's located outside of the the county easement. It's the same sign that was proposed at sixty three burners for context. Again, it's located. The detail of it is on plans here. For reference and.
So is that saying variance relief as sixty three burners, as far as dimensions and 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 set uh location and setup? Or different than setup? Different on setup?
Yes, yeah, this is ten foot from the property line and outside of the county easement.
So so front yard still has a deviation as well as the size of the sign, as well as the sign.
And what is the setback again? Ten foot.
No, I mean, what is the required setback again?
Don't know if they're required, if the sign is not permitted.
Oh, so there's no setback. No, well, the other one was zero on the on the property line, but there is no setback, it's just that it can't be the front yard. Right, and we'll move on, as we did with the other application, I would suggest we wrap that into the variance to allow the sign and then. To the site plan.
Yeah, yeah, no, we got.
Um this sign is provided for identification services, correct?
Correct. Um one other change that. Put a layout plan just so everybody can see, again, this is exhibit eight three, which is just an updated site layout. In the very front corner of the building here. Um if you look on the opposite side, there's a jog in the building, there was previously a jog contemplated in this corner. Um we've had conversations with New Jersey American Water about the property. Um they've been very helpful with providing some initial feedback to us. Um and right now, the the concept for this property to avoid having a hot box out here, we've. Enclosed this area of the building or expanded this corner of the building to create water room. Uh water service from our area will come into the building where we will have that football winner, all required. Uh water equipment located in this water room. Um and from there, water lines, legs of the building, you know, service to that uh site is uh the. The building in the rear as well, but there will be no need for a hot box. Um everything inside will be private once it needs that water room. Um so we've been able to give that feedback from American Water to make sure that we don't have a hot box um requirement. Now, as a result of that, um well, I'll talk about the trash enclosure here as well too. Um the, it was recommended at the time of preliminary, um and in Mr. Bright's letter again, that again, the borough ordinance is. Trash enclosures have a roof structure over them to prevent spillage and leakage out into the. Uh the roadways into the stormwater system. Uh we've agreed to put a roof structure over top of the enclosure. Um a- again, I say roof, to me, that means it's part of building coverage. Um with the addition of this area as well as the addition of this water room. The building coverage for the property now exceeds the required. Just wanna make sure I have all the areas written down. Yeah, the the twenty five percent requirement. Um. And twenty five point five percent is what is proposed. Uh so this is a additional hundred and fifty four square feet of roofed area added to development. Point five percent of coverage, the building itself meets the twenty five percent threshold. But when we add in the covering over the trash enclosure as well as the most water room, that puts it over the twenty five percent threshold. Um again, if you looked at it as if there's a hot box.
Good thing or a bad?
Is it variance, we're noting.
It's a variance that you need, okay.
It's variance that we need, the alternative is we don't cover it and we have a hot box outside.
No, 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 I just.
Yeah, just for the record.
Yeah, we have the deviation twenty five point five percent versus twenty five percent, and I think what Mr. Shavo and I are hearing. Uh is is the C two argument that the benefits outweigh the deficits, the benefits being no hot box and a covered dumpster.
Yes.
And it's a better design alternative from a planning perspective.
Absolutely.
Is there anything that would prevent you from sliding the box, the dumpster? Three feet to the left. You could still open the gates.
Three feet to the left.
Uh huh. Is there some distance it has to be from the building or anything like this, nothing, right? I mean, you could slide it there, right?
Yeah, I think in theory we can ship that, yeah.
The the aisle needs to be ten feet from a building. The the uh the answer is then it's got to be ten feet away. Oh, just the aisle, the aisle, the aisle.
Right, so this current line here is eleven feet.
But you see where the doors are hinged?
Yes.
That could theoretically be to the left, three feet or two and a half feet.
Then how do you get to the left side of it?
You don't get to the left side, it's open through the front door. There is no left side of the enclosure. I'm asking because this is where you can get an extra parking space. Okay, so it's just part of it, I just want to know if there's anything that would.
No, so again, we've got the ability for, if this drive aisle needed to shift. And it became two, you know, less than ten feet to this building, the building has the ability to.
Don't build the side wall to the back, because the pillowcase dialogue for the back of the dumpster. Just slide the dumpster over three feet, it's, so the door is so straight, that's all. Okay, well, come back to it later, okay?
Yes.
So Mr. Shelley, as part of our preliminary application, we have a couple other deviations. On the plan requirement relating to the proximity of the parking aisle to the building, the parking spaces, the lot lines. Can you just run us through which of those deviations we still have on the plan and which ones have been eliminated?
Sure, the only deviations that are still applicable, again, the drive aisle in proximity to building one. Requires no relief. The uh a wave or this variance is required for the internal roadway. Um and parking area, again, you've got this turnaround area that is three point two feet from the southern property line. Uh whereas ten feet is required. We've got parking spaces along the southern property line that are three point eight feet. From the property, whereas ten foot is required. And then we've got the parking spaces in front of building two in the rear of the site that are eight and a half feet. From the building, whereas ten feet is required. Um so those would be the three.
Your rear, your rear setback's good, right? Uh for the used building?
Correct, there's no setback variances for any of the buildings.
Over there and underwriting inside, everything's good there, isn't it?
Correct, you can apply with the setback requirements for for both buildings. It's the proximity of the parking to the property line, the drive aisle to the property line. And then the the parking to the front of the building to.
And Mr. Shelley, generally, the magnitude of this relief is similar to that, which was branded previously at the time of preliminary, correct?
Similar guess, there's instances where we've been able to eliminate some of the inconsistencies, we talked about the shortcomings of the original plan and the. The lack of access to be able to walk across from one space to another because the parking spaces are up against the building, so we've improved that. Uh but the magnitude is very similar, if not reduced, from the preliminary application.
And in your professional opinion, the circulation that's provided for here is improved over the prior plan and is safe for residents that are accessing the apartment.
Yes.
What is, what is the purpose of what happens to the standard property?
So if you have a wall. Yep, you can see there's a wall here uh that's required to create a flat pad around the building. That wall ends up cutting off access back to this uh back area. So once the site is constructed, the wall is built, the fences are put up, that that piece of the property, um there is no access to. That there is no access around the buildings, again, your building is five feet from the property here. Um that's not enough space to even try to promote any tentative access around to get back to that space. Uh and we believe just that that space in general, um again, it's a, it's a very small area that. Provides little benefit to um. To the community uh in general.
Well, should you put some steps across the wall? Then could you use that some sort of passive recreation?
Uh it's. In in theory, could you, could we put steps through here, yes, getting. Residents around the corner of a five foot building up against the wall, again, I I I don't think that's a great. Plan, but.
That might be active recreation instead of ask, I'm sorry.
But i- i- is it viable to put three steps through the wall here, the wall's only two foot, yes, it's viable to provide access back there.
Does any aspect of the plan, you know, the ratios and coverage and so forth, dependent on. The black sap or the fan handle area, does it?
The the.
If it weren't, if it weren't needed to you.
Mm hmm.
By the town.
Yep.
Does it affect the application?
Yes, the twenty five perc- twenty five point five percent building coverage is dependent on this property.
Needs the.
Yes.
Okay. And you're putting a wall there.
Right.
I don't know how practical it would be to utilize that back, it might be very.
There's gonna be more discussion on this topic, Tom.
I I know there is.
So we, as you know, so.
But I think that, you know, it's a recreational, uh to many, I think it's.
It'd be hard, it it requires great vision to figure out how that might happen, given the state it's in, I agree with you.
Well, I I'm not saying that it shouldn't be this recreational, but if it is needed to you, you have to maintain it in some way. You have to make sure that that it's kept clean and and safe, but if you have a wall there. How are your maintenance people gonna get back there, maintain it?
Again, there, there would be, have to be a means through that wall to access that space. Whether that's an area that's open to the residents, uh the community is uh is a different topic, but if it's a mains. Area that would need to be maintained, then we would need to have the appropriate measures to leave that.
Is it a retaining or a fill wall? You know, the two different types we just talked about, is this a wall where you're. Fill wall and filling to to create a level.
Correct.
Total level, okay, it's not a retaining wall where you're holding back.
No, we're not holding anything back, we're building up, creating a flat like flat head.
So the steps would be to the right.
The steps would be out into that space, correct? Again, it's only a two foot wall in that area.
It's continuation of the wall on the, that's on the north boundary where you're filling.
And and has ties.
Around the corner, that fill there too to keep it level.
Okay.
What else?
That's all that I have.
Anything regarding mechanicals on the building and where where are they relative? I'm just thinking of the neighbors in the south.
So there's mechanicals that are in these little cutouts back behind a building, that's where the condensers are, same thing, this bump out back behind the building.
Okay.
Uh they'll be screened appropriately according to the borough ordinances, um but they're tucked back behind the buildings.
And where are the buildings on lot four?
Excuse me?
Where are the buildings, the houses on lot four?
Where is the house on lot four?
Uh it's not where you're.
It's it's way in the front. It's not back here. We will have landscaping as well as the six foot solid on privacy fence.
That's a pretty big backyard.
On top of your.
And so if I may, those those lines there, I think we can continue to extend to show the entirety of lots four and five. In other words, lots four and five don't end there.
No, lots four and five.
Houses aren't back up against the railroad or whatever.
Correct, they do not end here, we can extend the paperwork to show exactly where they are, that's one of Mr. Bright's comments about just adding in any movement in. Um. Mr. Bright, you think that we would go and expand and add any, you know, additional structures that come up?
It is more of a concern for lots of ones, two O ones right there, so.
You 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 can see them on the air, right? With this arrangement, yeah.
Look at something.
Right, they didn't get there yet, they followed around.
The house is there front of the street.
Yeah.
Prosperity.
Yes, great point, thank you.
That's two O one right there.
You could see.
Sign gotten away.
This is that lot four, these buildings are front of the street over here.
Yeah, it's pretty deep.
Yes.
Got that one that we created two O one, that's that's right next to this, that's why we're thinking about the mechanical.
Yeah, that's the house that's closest to.
Yeah. And that's.
That's press was flooded.
So those waters is sort of after. Right, the sprinkler plaza is still there, still have, yeah, then that's accessible. The water line would just come from building one, run through the site, tie into the front of the building. And the sprinklers looking, same thing, building one still has a small sprinkler room on the right corner. But in the front, the left corner is where the water room, backwater, all that stuff is gonna go.
With all your experience of um affordable housing, do you find you have to, you you need to put bicycle racks in?
Yeah, we we would, we would.
Lots of orders, people bring them into their houses and sort of.
No, we we would want a bicycle rack outside.
Where, you will put one in somewhere.
Correct.
Or two, whatever, okay. All right, any more questions?
Yes, we're moving into on the plan with a detail on the location.
Professionals or board members of this witness? Uh okay, I was asking if our board, if our professionals or our boardmen had any more questions for this witness. Cause then I was, go ahead and and.
Just gonna wait for your your discussion about additional parking spaces to see where that ended up before.
Well, I don't know when they would like to talk about getting additional parking spaces.
Well, I would just, um, the idea you have a setback from the parking space building two. Cannot be made combined uh for that it could be a little more landscaping between the sidewalks, so they think like they're not. You know, aiming at the units. That's the eight point five, get it to. You have eleven, you have eleven on one side. Yeah. Eight point five. That was ten, you're nine and a half, it's probably close enough.
Right, yeah, the the building would shift four, first building would have to shift four slightly, take everything and move it accordingly. Um.
Six inches.
Yeah, but I think it's something we could.
And I, so I wasn't sure if you needed that strike aisle to the. EV parking spaces or not.
I I don't think it's requiring it was something that we thought. When we have parking on the opposite side of the drive aisle, giving somebody at least a designated gap across. Uh would be nice, I think, when we start shifting drive aisles and moving. Uh, would be nice, I think when we start shifting drive aisles and moving things around, that would be something that would get eliminated.
That's two cars that are gonna have an aisle, so.
Yeah.
Is there a way of, on the northeast corner, making that a little bit wider to get access to the unused part of the site?
Right there, reducing the building to get around it?
Or if you move the building, are you gonna move the building to?
We, we, we've been mindful to ensure that this building does not get closer.
Okay.
Yeah, their property line on the southerly line. The, the rear building will not shift in order to get the ten foot from the building to the parking. The front building would shift forward by maybe a foot, um, and then the whole parking would shift upwardly, but the building itself will stay in the same location.
Your northeast corner of the east building is, that's right on the setback line.
Right on the five.
Like, it's literally right there.
Yes. Again, it's five foot, you've got a walkway. Again, it's five foot, you've got the retaining wall that starts on the property line, retaining wall. Again, it says five-foot wall, little bit of batter, fence back behind it, in reality, you're talking about four feet, it's.
You're five, ten, you're really, yeah, just what you said, you're really five feet, but there's stuff on the property.
It's five feet, but a little bit of extra, yeah.
There is a door back there, I mean, some accessible.
Correct. The, the only door that's in the back of the building is a sprinkler closet. I see, all the other doors to the units are from the center, I'll call it an atrium, but just a little covered entryway of it all.
And there wouldn't be access around the bottom right corner because of landscaping, is that?
Uh, correct, so there's no access around the bottom side, there's some yard unless to be able to get drainage away from this area.
Right.
Um, it's not a, again, it's not a, a travel area, I will give you more of a.
What about fire assets? Have you spoken to fire chief?
Uh, we spoke to the fire chief about the mine work site, I have no comments from the fire chief about, uh, this site beyond. Um.
Because what they wanna get from back of the building?
Again, it's not, uh, we don't have any comments.
Do you have windows, you have bedrooms with windows on the back of the building?
There'll be windows on the back, there's no windows on this side of the building facing the southern with property line. That was one of the items that we talked about at the preliminary.
I just meant, the same point of the bedroom, it's like, you know, it's an emergency access, you have a window, it's expected that someone could potentially save you out of that window, well. I'm gonna suggest something a little crazy, but. It, what would happen if you took the north? Wall of the east building and you angled it, and you made it parallel to the property line? I know it's.
North wall.
Your buildings, I'm ready. No, no, suppose you said, I want that wall to be set back ten feet from the property line, all the way along the wall. Right, so it's big up front and it narrows to the back, and I know it's definitely not what your architectural design is, but. It's something to just think about potentially, that it will be beneficial to have. Side access for various purposes that'll come up and, I, I don't wanna create additional. Cost, right, so I don't, I just don't know the, the implications of the construction. That you were to do that, I'm not asking you to step it, I'm not asking you to reduce the floor space. It affects two units, right?
That are, they're both three.
They're three that I do have.
I can let our architect come talk with the.
Yeah.
What that is in that area and.
I think so.
Maybe something.
All right, uh, are there any questions from the?
Uh, I just wanted to just double check one thing, which, which Bradley didn't have anything in particular in his report. I just want the applicant's engineer and counsel with the applicant. Uh, to confirm that the applicant was stipulated as conditioned to improve for, for wall items set forth in Mr. Brightley's. Uh, nine-page report, obviously eighteen point twenty-three, if that's the last.
That's the last one based off of the plans that he had, we've made some changes to.
They, they actually addressed it.
Any remaining? Yeah, any remaining, yes, we'll, we'll work with Mr. Brightley and. Mr. Zabel's all to discuss that.
And I didn't mean to take away from Mr. Bradley, he had any specific ones he wanted identified, just if not, I wanted to make sure you can be stiffed all.
Well, they came compliant. It had really substantive, I mean, something you want us to, you know, they're, they're allowed these to carry. Carried from our resolution, um.
A little different.
I feel.
Once they're gonna address me, I, I think these are. Well, you know, one mind.
They're all addressable, they're all, you know, there's nothing. Honorous essentially, they're lurking.
They're great. And it's, and is that the same in Mr. Zabel's planning now?
Correct.
Okay, and, um, yeah, not, not too many items, but. Compliance would be likely to be lower than.
Landscaping.
Landscaping, uh, like landscaping, it's all this work with the applicant. And then major issues about the, and, and that's minor, and that's, so cheap of place to do this. Not invasive and, and affordable housing compliance, of course, and the like.
Well, like what we said, I want this to be mutually aware of the three projects for the. Cause this is exceptionally unusual to have an affordable housing environment with no singles.
Oh, within.
And we need, and, and we know that, we know that, and, but we know that in aggregate.
Hmm, right.
They're compliant with. The minimums, and in fact, this development is needed to make the other applications compliant.
Oh, yes, the, uh, uh, the resolution will have the same preparatory.
Yeah, yeah, you did all the work, it is.
Yep, 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 ab- absolutely.
I wanted to.
The bed, the UHAC bedroom requirements are complied with, uh, uh, on a, uh, uh.
Aggregate.
Combined or aggregate, uh, global, yeah, uh, uh, amongst the three sites.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, will be, it will be in this, uh.
Okay, uh, resolutions, I think there are no questions from the.
Um, Mr. Zabel's memo on the, this development, listed eleven, uh, conditions. Of the previous, uh, preliminary.
I'm sorry, who's memo?
Well, they're on there, yeah, yeah. And have we addressed those, but we assume that those conditions will continue, uh, my, my recommendations that they carry over to the extent they're applicable. Uh, and combined with the final. Uh, I was merely pointing out that there are still things that need to be not lost in the discussion from prior, and that's part of resolution. Yeah, we carry them all forward, and I understood when I asked my question, I got the answer that they can comply with all of them. Uh, but was that it included that as well, uh, it is the entirety of the report including four, eight through K.
Well, can we, we, we should make the effort, and, and as you know, like, you've had some resolutions with seventy terms, are we gonna make?
Oh, we're gonna, we're gonna do the reconciliation.
To reconcile, if you're referring, condemn the shaft out of it.
Yeah. All right, the plots from the jets.
Okay, now, any questions from the public for this one? I see one.
C O L L A R.
And, uh, yes, good to see you again, and don't need to be sworn in, as you know, the, uh, uh, just the first question, so let's proceed.
Uh, nice going, making the changes that we'll, uh, we'll request them. It looks good. The one question I have is, uh, the tree line, just, you, you know, my property is the one next to it, uh, the tree line. That you've put in, uh, uh, what type of tree, by the? Is, is that planned yet?
Is that along the southerly line?
Yeah, so, so we've got property, I have something planned.
Pull up our landscaping plans, so I can. Accurately tell you what was posed in there. So, the plan that was submitted shows some landscaping between the parking and the wall. Um, that landscaping due to the need of a, um. Guide rail for those parking spaces is not viable, that area will be finished with a stone finish. Again, there's a six-foot file fence, so this area is screened from, from your view. There will be some trees, um, in that area. Again, trying to zoom in here. One tree we have posed up in that area is a, is a magnolia tree, six to eight foot in height. Uh, probably some trees up in the front trying to screen that front transformer to the, to the limit that. It was allowed by the power company there, those would be some evergreens, six to eight foot in height. Again, most of that will be screened by the, the, the vinyl privacy fence.
So I guess my question is just along this section here where my property looks out at the building. So firstly, taking the windows away.
Yes.
Fantastic, and I really like it, but creates a stark view of the property. So my win, my living room windows are gonna look out onto that to a certain extent. So what I ask is if you could put some screen in. I would say there's probably eleven-foot elevation change between my window and the ground, so some trees that would kind of. Break that, uh, break that view off rather than using directly at the wall.
Right.
From my living room.
Um, I'll let our architect go into the aesthetics of what that sidewall looks like.
Hmm.
Um, we don't have any landscaping proposed between the wall and our building right now. Because you can see on our plan, you've got some drainage infrastructure.
Also that picture that the color rendering had trees in that, right? That, that's what tripped me, I guess.
Uh, yeah, the. If anything goes in that area, it would have to be small enough not to interfere with those pipes underneath there, so this is. There'd usually be some small shrubs, some ground cover, and then it's not.
So there.
Above the fence.
Is there anything you can do working with my property line to put something along that, cause again, it's just. That's gonna be a stark view that I'm looking at. Um, I, I understand the drainage issue, and that, that was gonna be one of my questions, actually.
You requested me, I think, put some landscaping in your property and you giving, um, a, a, a license or reason to the right to do so?
Right, yeah, if it, if it means that I could gain some kind of blockage to just looking at the property from that, just that section here. Cause this, this would have been perfect, those trees, if they could have been put in there and be tall enough, but if it needs to come onto my property, I'm okay with that.
We can work with you on add it between there.
Right, send it to, also, go ahead.
Uh, landscape screening, can I just get some specifics as to where it would be, it'll be subject to.
Yeah, so it would be in the area along the southerly side of the rear building. That some supplemental landscaping may be placed between. The proposed building and the adjoining neighboring building to the south.
Uh, adjoining, uh, a lot two, or twenty?
Two point nine.
Two point oh one.
Yeah, two point.
Two point oh one.
Two oh one, yeah.
Yeah, twenty.
Yeah, I know, I'm twenty second, yeah, still, a couple, two years, yeah, they, they, uh, uh. Okay, yeah, lot two oh one, number one, they, they, uh. Okay, and, and is, is there sort of a ballpark linear length there?
Um. I can give you a number. Eight, eight, it's about fifty feet, the, the, the size of the building.
Including the arching.
That's the area that we're, we seem to be mutually agreeing.
Right, so the length of this building here is fifty feet, I'd say.
It would go to the backside of the property, so it's from about there, yeah.
Yeah, sure.
So you're talking about a fifty-foot section here.
Right.
Um, again, we would have to kind of see exactly how far your building is from the.
How do you build the, there's a real retaining wall there in the rear building, right, and it's not a bill, it's a real, you've got a real wall there, no?
No, the wall, we're.
Your level?
Yep.
It's just the, uh, it's just the barrier that you're putting there.
High to allow us the ability to get drainage around our building. That's, again, it's not a significant wall, it's, it's minor so that we can flatten out the area behind.
You won't have any problem constructing that, it's not like you need, oh, we found, we could get onto his property.
No, no, we wouldn't need to, and, and from what I see here. I would think, again, we would just see how close we could get to the house without it being an impactful. But, yeah, a larger type of tree that would grow taller and kind of break up your view of the building up there, I think. Versus any type of row of evergreens, I don't think that really serves what you're talking about of. That two-story mass savings.
Right.
A building here where I think maybe just a larger at the time of planting shade tree on that side, as long as it's. The proximity to your actual house is appropriate, that we could come up with something, we could run it by Mr. Zabel's office. From a landscaping perspective, as well as run it by you, but up, yeah.
Yes.
I'm thinking maybe just a larger shade tree that we could put in that area that will grow and kind of fill in that space.
Yeah, just to break up the, the view.
No.
Again, the, the, the lack of windows for me is perfect, but logically, by taking the windows out, then it's, it's a little bit stark. So breaking it up is, would be great.
Yeah, I think we could accomplish that.
And as, as, as far as the drainage, just. Full disclosure from my backyard, that tree that we've got locked, locked up for the back there, every back corner. There is so much water that runs down there, so just, just as a matter of why, I'm sure you're fine for it, but that's where all the water falls down to.
Okay.
Um, so just make sure you got that covered, I guess that's a comment, no question, sorry.
No, and, and the fact that we're implementing some drainage in that area should give that the ability to.
Yeah, cause that way.
It just, I think, master.
Are you gonna buy a comment?
Just.
Uh, well, cause if not, I'll square you in right now, uh, retrospectively for all that we just said. If you raise your right hand, if you swear to God for the testimony you just gave, as well as any further testimony that you may give, this proceeding is the truth all through. And I'm about to truth.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So, when you raise, when you install this two-foot wall. The water is running down to, to the wall, and then you have to bring on his property? Get it to run east-west?
No, we won't need to bring on the property, we're gonna say that corner of the site. Cut it down, put the wall in, the water will drain towards the wall. Hit the stone back behind the wall and get down through it, and we'll actually give it a pat to.
You, you just may have a waterfall feature and, that, I mean, seriously.
And so what we can do is. Yeah, what we can do is increase the size of some of the fires, maybe have some, it's good information to have, so that we could accurately put in some, maybe additional infrastructure on that. Uh, backside of the wall to, little more stone, a little more, you know, drains back behind it to pull that water.
Okay.
Give it somewhere to go.
So one, one other question, the, the, the size of the water center, I think, so that mean you're bringing the elevation up from where the parking lot was? So the property's gonna be higher than what I look at today?
No, so, uh, in that back corner of where the building is, is the only area where we're gonna be cutting down. Into the grade, the rest of the area up in the front of the parking. Um, again, it's a small retaining wall along here, we're gonna be taking the grade at there now. And we're gonna get.
Okay.
All right, close to the tracks where they're gonna have to fill.
The tracks is on the high side, yours southerly side, it's a little cut to bring me down. Um, so really, you're not even gonna see the wall, you're just gonna see the six-foot fence.
Right.
We're gonna have a very minor wall on it, so.
All right, and then six-foot fence runs all the way.
All the way along your entire northern property line, six-foot solid, bottom fence.
All right, I think that would do.
That's a good question. The way you, the, the pan handle, I'm looking at the Google area a little bit, heavily wood.
Yes.
If a tree falls down, which is, happens now all the time, we have tornadoes here and everything, so. And you have to get equipment back there to remove the tree, how are you gonna do this?
Use a chainsaw to cut it up and take it out.
You only have, if, if you need a, um, any kind of heavy equipment, you only have five feet of spacing.
If the tree falls down, you can cut up any tree with, with a chainsaw and take it out in small little pieces, you deal with what you, what you have. Um, in order to work with it up.
But how do you get past the, the corner of the building?
Again, we talked that there's four feet behind from the building to a, a fence on top of a wall. That's enough room for somebody, for maintenance to be able to walk past it, it's not an area that we're promoting as. You know, residents to, to frequent that area, but it's a, a wide enough area for somebody with a chainsaw to pass through there and get back to that area. Um, to address that.
They'll, they'll have to put some kind of branch or something, or some kind.
A gate in the wall and two steps down. A gate in the wall and two steps down.
Yeah, we need for a guy to go by with a chainsaw. He's gonna be have, have to go back with a wheelbarrow.
Yeah.
Okay, it's gonna have to be wide enough. There's, to do that.
It's not a fun easy job, but it's, there's enough path and access for somebody to be able to do that type of maintenance. But we would leave it with it so that there's not
I need to stop, I need a motion.
Yeah.
Whether the board wants to consider hearing the next witness.
Or we can
Go, we done. We've got, we've, we're carrying.
What's that?
We need a motion to hear it. It's ten thirty and we need a motion to
I'm sorry, just to hear it.
Good.
And maybe extend the, the thirty?
You, you move, we extend and that we agree to hear another witness after ten thirty.
Okay.
Invites, okay. And do we have a second?
I'll send him.
You'll second? Okay, all in favor? I, I'll oppose. Any? You don't, one don't know. I carries. So we're extending to eleven thirty and we're going to hear your next witness.
I do.
Thank you. Our next witness is our architect. Amy Everon.
Hello.
Erin, yeah, Erin Umo. Can you just, uh, for the record, provide your name and your business address?
Yes, uh, first name's Erin Leslie Umo, D U M O. Business address is six thirty-two Pompton Ave, Cedar Grove, New Jersey.
And for the benefit of the board, I, I know you've testified before, this board hasn't been accepted as an expert in architecture, correct?
Yes.
Is your license is still current?
Yes, it is.
And can you just very briefly provide your education and background?
Uh, sure. I have a bachelor's of architecture from NJIT. As Nicole mentioned, I'm licensed architect in the state of New Jersey and I'm an associate at Engle's Architecture and Engineering. We'd like to offer her as an expert in the field.
We're willing to hear her testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be, I'll be prepared.
Thank you.
So, um, what's on the screen right now is what
I'm sorry, it's what we, yeah?
We are looking at, um, this was actually submitted as part of the application. This is sheet A one hundred.
More than ten days in advance, we'd knock, we'd march as we say.
Yeah.
Uh, A one hundred. Uh, and what, what is that? Floor plan?
This is a floor plan.
Thank you.
Um, just a real brief, this is the, uh, original building location before we ended up shipping it due to the, uh, proposed easement that's no longer proposed. Um, so I'm gonna go to our exhibit. I don't know what number we're
Eight four.
Eight four. This is uh, building one revised layout and the date is one eleven twenty-four.
Thank you.
Uh, so generally speaking, the building is the, relatively the same shape. Um, same number of units as before. The main changes, as Mr. Shelly described, was the water utility room here in the front, which would hold the back flow preventer for, for the site. And then there's a sprinkler closet back here, which we had in previous design, but, uh, uh, was not limited. So I wanted to make sure that was on the record. Um, building function is the same as it did before. Each apartment has its own entrance. Uh, three units on the first floor, uh, three on the second floor. Um, I'm gonna go to the rear building just to point out, um, the location of no windows along the adjacent property line, uh, in relationship to the floor plan. We're talking about this wall here. You can see there's no windows on it. Um, and I'm just gonna go to the elevation. Give you one second. So we're looking at sheet
Safe five, or is it all?
No, this is all one, yeah. We're looking at sheet A two hundred. Uh, elevation number five. This is the building two rear elevation that, uh, is adjacent to the, uh, property, the adjacent property owner. Um, so as you can see, there's no windows on it, but there is a change in material. So it's not, the elevation isn't comprised of, uh, one singular material. There's a couple different materials. There's a fiber cement lap siding and a fiber cement board and battening siding, which would be, uh, two different colors. So
No articulation or anything, but different colors.
Correct, yeah.
Or breaking it up.
Correct. Um, and then I will go to our colored elevations.
This one will be five.
Yes, this is eight five. And this is dated twelve fourteen twenty-three. So this is building one. This is the front building. Um, it's, uh, shows you the, the color scheme proposed, which is in line with the other developments in this, um, in this project. Um, we're proposing stone veneer base, fiber cement siding in a variety of colors, um, gray tones and whites, standing seam metal roof and, uh, black windows. And, uh, we have a wood tone accents at the porch overhangs. Um, again, this is the front building and then the next PDF, uh, which I guess is A six. This is also dated twelve fourteen twenty-three. And this is building two. This is the rear building. Um, with the same color palette, um, proposed as well. And, uh, I believe I
And the same materials as previously described?
Correct.
Um, just, I know you mentioned, how many two bedrooms and how many three bedrooms are? And is it eight and four?
There's, uh, seven two bedrooms and five three bedrooms.
Five.
Yeah, uh, well, you know, yeah, that's, thank you for, because, uh, now I'm hearing what I had and it's four and eight and four.
Um, I think, um, Brannard's Ave and Mindbrook swapped units. So we corrected the unit breakdown on the existing sites, but this one actually never changed.
You can, you can share in fact in the, at this moment, since we're talking about bedrooms, to address the fact that there are no bedroom, one bedrooms here, that's compliant with the act. Section five totally
Oh, no, I know. It's just, it's compliant. It's
It's compliant. I just wanted to get that on the record.
Because no developer would develop without single bedrooms. That's, and that's why they put that into the law. So that's okay. But, but the real, the real key here is to be able to use these bedrooms, these units to allow the number of one bedrooms in the other units. That's what's necessary.
Right. So in order for them to comply with the bedroom distribution, the
With all three. It's fine. It'll be Yeah. Yeah. How, I thought these were like over, under
Exactly.
in terms of engineering. There's like a two bedroom on the first floor and a two bedroom on the second floor.
Oh.
How do you come up with a, uh, distribution, like? How, how does that happen?
I'm going to
Instruction wise, you know, it's, it's like sec, two bedroom on the first floor, two bedroom on the second floor, three bedroom on the first floor, three bedroom on the second floor.
So for, I'll just, um, this is the, this is the originally submitted plans. So in the front here, there's a two bedroom. In the middle, there's a three.
Right.
In the back, there's a, a three bedroom. If we go to the second
You took a little
I'm sorry?
You took a little
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, well, yeah.
In, uh, in the second floor, there's a two bedroom in the front, a two bedroom in the middle and a three in the back. And the main difference is the middle unit, which I don't have them side by side. So I'm trying to see what's different.
Okay, so you have a three bedroom on the first floor, but a two bedroom on the second floor.
That's correct.
And that is.
And then the rear building.
Just for that building?
Yes.
Basically.
Mm-hmm.
The rear one.
And the rear one is let's see, a three bedroom at the top here, a two bedroom and a two bedroom at the bottom here. And the second floor, these are stacked. So the second floor has a three bedroom at the top, a two stack and a two stack as well. So it's just that
All right.
That one.
So the way you guys fit my three bedrooms is you use the middle section of the first building to be a three bedroom?
Correct.
Okay, um, all right, that makes it clear. Sorry, you can continue.
Um, just, I don't have
That was a few questions.
Oh, I wanted to clarify, um, doing the angled wall earlier, is this, um, were you talking about angling this wall?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
How, how could it possibly be done?
To, to give a little more clearance here.
To create a corridor between the other wall and I, I'm not expecting an answer. I'm just saying, oh, there's something and
We can look and see
Yeah.
What can
And I don't, like I say, cost or whatever, I just I don't know. Maybe you just step it a little bit. I, you know, I, maybe that's the easiest instruction. It's just slightly step it so you keep the same floor space, but you get clearance, a bit of clearance on the side. Angulate might be, might be a dumb thing.
Using that portionless coverage, your coverage coverage, so conceivably it should be part of the accessible part of the law.
Well, we have to provide access back there for the meetings.
Well, same, nothing to plan so quite with that.
Doesn't have what?
Access.
Right, yeah. Well, we mentioned we'll add a stair or a, a gate.
John, does the property have to be accessible in order to be cons- considered part of the total area of the lot?
I'm, I'm sorry?
Let's suppose I had a lot.
Right.
And it's got this amount of space. Let's say there's a cliff, you know, and it's the back side of the lot, it's just not accessible at all. You just can't get to it for some reason.
I'm, I'm
It still counts.
It has to by land.
By law.
By definition of
So accessibility has nothing to do with lot square foot.
Right, you have to.
Okay. All right, that's what I thought. It was interesting, by the way. Uh, any other questions for this witness? Uh, professionals, any questions for the witness?
The or, the or, uh, we do. None.
Okay, any questions for the, from the public for this witness? Done, okay. Um, now I can ask for
Comments.
Comments.
To the extent that already provided.
Any, any members of the public, any, well, our professional, we, we'll, we'll come back to our team here. Um, any, any, uh, members of the public that want to comment on this, uh, application?
None.
Okay. I have a few things to say. Um, thank you very much for redoing it. Uh, I, um, I do have, what did you call it? Something engineering.
Valuable.
Valuable engineering to give you a few more parking spaces. Um, which I could just give you and you can decide, as long as you're gonna, like, you proposed X number of parking spaces, it could become some kind of an issue, then uh, fine. Well, not, um, I have two major uh, uh, yes, no, major additions that you need to address. Me personally, the board may have others. Uh, the first is, I really need you to obtain from First Energy real estate department, an official statement that they do not expect to have any right of way at, or access to your to your pan handle or flagstaff or whatever. So I need legally that to come back to us. Right now, there are poles there that are necessary to keep Burnetville functioning, that have to be maintained. And you, uh, your property is where the trail is that the vehicles ride on to maintain those poles. So let's just find out. They may say, I, I don't think there's an easement that's registered with Somerset County. They're notoriously bad at registering easements. But they may have right of way historically. And it's like adverse
Adverse possession.
Adverse possession risk.
Or restricted views.
Or whatever. These, they're, they're, they're each more in each other. Um, so number one, need that. Don't underestimate how hard it is to get them to talk to you.
You go, I go and sit in a lot of them.
Yeah, I, I was almost saying, you almost have to have somebody.
Open Mars tend to go sit there. Waiting for somebody to
Um.
Well, can you write a letter that says unless, you know, you don't need a response?
They won't read it.
It's okay?
No, if, if you really do have to contact them and
No.
Write a letter. And I'm just saying, don't think, you know, oh, wait a couple of days, try doing this. No, like you, you really need to do it right away. The second major thing that you may or may not be aware of is that this is a borough parking lot. There have been many resolutions that have been passed that have required the applicant to purchase decals to use this parking lot as a con as a stipulation essentially for their ability to have implemented that application. And so what I need you to do collectively is to get to the council who's driving this and say, what are you gonna do? And they have plenty of choices. They could revoke the ordinance. Many of the resolutions will stand in the past that say, oh, well, if, if anything they have the typical verbiage, some aspect of the resolution is no longer relevant. It dropped, but everything stays the same. They need to decide if they're gonna change the ordinance. Because we need to know how to put a parking relief, or if we can anymore. And they need to decide mostly their problem, what they're doing about the decals. They went out in December and people are paying money to use these parking spaces. So it needs to be I would say, to talk to Jack Pithin, um, I suspect it should be a executive session of the council. Um, but we are, um, and the planning board, we're dependent on the guidance from the council and there's this obligation, well, I, you've configured it all out, but basically there are people that expect to park in your lot. So, I mean, cause that's where they park and they have a detail that says they can. And that has to get resolved. And I know they're doing a parking survey and there's a lot going on and so forth. You can work it out with the town. It's exactly what needs to be done. We need to know that this has been resolved from the council's perspective. Legally.
So I think in terms of a imposing that as a condition, what could become problematic is that we don't have control over that. So it's a, a borough
Borough property.
Transferring the prop, they can't transfer the property to you.
Correct, but it's, so as we heard previously, in order to file our applications for financing, we need to get through resolution compliance. So we can certainly send formally send a letter to the council identifying that
You can create the stipulation that you will contact the council and, and, and so forth. You can't say you can't determine, none of it. You can't determine what, what the answer is gonna be. We're just gonna say it's, it, that you stipulate you will uh, work with them and for us is here to help make sure that people understand it. But it jeopardizes your legal situation. And it certainly creates a problem for us. Um, but I understand that's, I believe with our guidance, that would be the expectation is it would be written as a stipulation that you'll work with the council, but without any guarantee on your part, you can't stipulate to there being an answer. Your partners, your partners with the council, it's their problem.
It, 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 it's an issue to the extent it's an issue that impacts fire or the food does. And I'm not saying For approvals, and I'm not saying necessarily. Does because, uh, uh, uh. Invariably, when there are board approvals, over time. Years, decades, generations.
Stuff changes.
Uh, uh, centuries, uh, they, dynamics change and conditions uh, become. You know, impacted. Uh, the, the, uh, so, uh, the governing body. Entered into all these various agreements and, and, and ordinance changes. Uh, knowingly, uh, and so.
No, 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 but let's not go that far.
Well, we, we have.
Let's not go there.
Okay, well, we hit, well, here's the thing. We, we don't know if, what, if anything needs to be done.
No, we don't.
Um, and, and what we do know is. That, um, the government, if it, if, what, if anything needs to be done. Uh, is that will be addressed by the governing body.
Yes, it will.
And this applicant, to the extent. It's necessary and that the governing body hasn't already been. Uh, notified by this board in essence of these proceedings, or for that matter isn't aware of it already, didn't need anybody to notify. The governing, uh, uh, them of this, um. You know, frankly, anything more than asking this applicant to notify the governing body, uh.
No, not just notify, not just notify, collaborate with their partner, yes.
Well, I don't know what.
And that can be their definition of collaboration. We've done.
Mister Chairman, I'm trying to, I'm trying to.
They're trying to scale it back.
I'm trying to ensure that the board stays within its authority, doesn't do anything outside its authority or arbitrary decisions are unreasonable.
Then we've defined what that is.
Yeah.
We've defined what that is, and there will be stipulations that they will interact with the council to help. Resolve this. And it's the council's decision.
It's a.
It's not theirs, they can't control it, all we're saying is we have to, and we pass stipulations like this frequently, not for this topic, but frequently.
When, when, when there is something that the applicant is required to get or pursue from the governing body, yes. This is a situation where I don't see. Where the applicant is required to pursue or obtain something from the governing body, the governing body is aware of the issue. And the, and, and to the extent it's, there's an obligation on the governance body's part. Uh, if there's no implication candidly that I can.
They can ignore that stipulation, Steve, but they need to stipulate that they will at least contact the governing body about this issue.
Yes, that's what I said, contact.
And, and work with the governing body.
Okay, now, I don't under, I don't understand.
We don't hope the governing body will have them to work with them.
What do we have them to do so I can make a decision?
And then say, okay, this is what we're gonna do in the meantime.
Well, I agree with that. We've, we've, they're asking me out, what, what this applicant to be asked to do in, in this certain circumstance. I'm trying to, see, only authority here is with the council, not the.
Yeah, yeah.
But, but what about the, there have been multiple approvals? With conditions that they had to bypasses.
No, no, I understand that, and that is an issue that the governing body is aware of and has to address, what I am simply asking. Uh, so I'm happy to ask for stipulation from this applicant as what they have to do beyond notifying the governing body of the issue. Um, and when you say work with them.
Yes.
I, I want you to, I, I need to know what we are asking them to work with them to do. And what obligation we are putting on this, uh, uh, on, on this applicant. So that, and this applicant needs to know what it is you're obliging them to do, so they know whether they can stipulate to it or not.
Yes.
If they're not gonna stipulate to it, I gotta know, uh, what you're gonna impose, so I can kind of advise you whether it's, whether it's within your authority or not, or arbitrary. Pressure or reasonable or not, and you can take my advice.
Or not ignore them, or not.
Yeah, right. So, but, but we haven't gotten there yet, what are you asking us to, so? You know, it's really clear. You tell them to work with them. How, how, yeah, I'm sorry, give me a chance, I'm sorry, um. When? How do you determine whether that condition has been satisfied?
You don't care?
Well.
Because it's, it's voluntary, it's a voluntary stipulation like we do so many other times, you say. Could you please try to do this, could you please work with an engineer, could you do something? And it's a stipulation, it's not binding, it's not like, oh, I gotta deliver something.
The situation comes to mind when we had the, um. Uh, Burnsville Center.
Yeah.
Had a similar requirement that they work with the school board.
Right, for the, the connection.
The gate between the primary. Yeah, the gate coming down the home. We never could determine whether they had met that condition or not, because they said we had, we said, we haven't done anything. Uh, and it sort of went in limbo, so what I'm suggesting is that you sort of find what it is. We want to do, to do as work with it, so you have an objective standard that you can apply in determining whether they met that requirement.
And then I have a question, what about, what about the conditions of pre, all the previous approvals?
That's our, that's the town's.
No, they're planning board approvals.
Yeah, they are.
I, 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 we, we understand that. That's what I just addressed earlier.
Requires them to buy five spaces in the amortment.
The clauses, no, no, no.
What happens to that approval?
Nothing, nothing changes with that approval, as I said before, and I'll say again, uh, over time. Uh, conditions, uh, uh, may be impacted by circumstances in the evolution of development in any municipality. Uh, so, so if there is an obligation for someone to address that. I think we've all have, uh, understood and established and agreed that obligation, if there is an obligation. Uh, can only be the obligation of the borough, where, if we're gonna ask them to stipulate, or we're gonna impose. An obligation on them to notify them and work with them as board member Ar always pointed out. What does work with them mean to accomplish what, when have they done their job, when have they not done their job? And I'm trying to, in my mind, if, if we require them.
No, no, you're talking about trying to solve the problem, and that's the council's problem to try to solve.
Notify them, I think they've stipulated to notify.
Parking variances with downtown. In the downtown district were granted as, with a condition.
Yes, yes.
Now that, that condition, what happens to that condition?
For the third time, I'll tell you that conditions sometimes are impacted by time and developments that occur. And that's why I'm telling you, I'm not telling you there's an obligation specific of the governing body to do anything. But if there is an obligation of anybody to do.
Trying to tell us that, but there is an obligation. Of the governing body to do something.
If, if there's, if there's an obligation.
There is.
Now, with tenant, there is.
Buying a detail that have parking, now Jack Pithin would tell you, no one ever needs that parking, no one ever uses it. I think that's cause of, okay?
He, he, let, let, let's get to the point.
So we're in the compromise position, they will notify and they will attend the town council meeting to present the situation, one meeting.
Well, the applicant stipulated to notify the governing body of this issue and attending one governing body meeting. Uh, to address this issue.
So, we're happy to notify the town council and we're happy to attend a meeting, assuming that the governing body will allow us to present this issue.
Okay, we have a stipulation.
I think that's.
But what happens to tenant A, they got a that parking variance with the condition. Of providing the excess parking in the amortment lot.
And, and, I think what we're talking about here, Mister Simoff, for the extent there's an obligation of anybody to address that issue. If it's the governing body and, and the applicant has stipulated to notifying them and attending a meeting to address it.
What?
What, what happens to that approval?
They're not notified.
No, the applicant has stipulated.
They have not notified the people that.
I intend that the applicant has stipulated to attend, to notify the governing body and attending a meeting.
Right, right, right.
To address it, and, and the governing body will have to determine what if any obligation they have, and if they, uh, uh, the governing body concludes it as an obligation. The governing body will have to determine what they're gonna do with respect to said obligation.
They said that impacts, yes, they're, they're, yes.
So does the, does the variant, the parking variant become void?
Yes.
And no, no, the variance does become void.
No, not the variance.
Become void, what I'm thinking of is to reverse. If I have a condition that I have to use a spot or purchase a decal at out, out, and then it's a municipal lot, and the borough decides to. Let me develop it and eliminate.
Those states change.
Do you know, that's the change that's, that Mister Warner is talking about?
Yeah.
I think that obligation is relieved because it's no fault of that, that development.
If.
And I think that was a conscious provision by the council.
No, there are two sides to the question, the first side is. I don't wanna pay for a decal, I don't even wanna do any parking, you're just making me as, as, you're just holding me up and making me do it as part of. My resolution, right, that's. Set it, let's say that did. You know, then there's the other set of people that said. I really do want some parking spaces, I really do need, I've got ten employees and I really do need a couple of spaces. This, this is the deal, the council has to deal with both sides, one is just forgiveness, yeah, don't worry about it, it's under the bridge, things change, da, 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 da. There's the other side where. Does someone actually need the space, and the council has to figure that out, they've gotta go to every applicant. And, and every decal entitlement, whatever, and they, it's not a long list, by the way, it's like twelve. Enterprises that have to be contacted, and they have to determine and say, here. Do you still need parking spaces? And they have to figure that out, and maybe that's part of the parking study or whatever.
I, I think that's a broader, broader planning issue for the development of the downtown, and I think that.
This is a very tactical one, they just have to figure it out, and everyone may say. I didn't ever use those parking, they, the Jack Pithin's perception, everybody's just buying the decals that we told them to buy.
You know, we're getting into raw field, we're navigating raw, I tell you, this application, and essentially, now we're talking about zoning enforcement. If, if I was required as an applicant to force that decal, but nobody's parking there, there's something wrong.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We can't address that now.
No, no, we're not, we're not, we're not here.
With our respect, we request we move forward.
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, are there any, tho- those were my two big, I just, um, I do have. Which I can show you, um, we can figure out some way, how to get the extra spaces. Are there any other comments? Discussion on the board before. Well, we, we already asked the public for comments, right?
There were, there was no public comment beyond, uh, our, our number twenty last point oh one. Uh, Mister Coller's, uh, public comments during the questioning.
And we'll summarize, but, uh, right at the moment, are there any other comments?
Yeah, maybe what we can do real quick is just confirm the relief again, as we did before, that the board is going to make a.
Okay, summarize, you're really.
And the relief is, uh. Uh, many preliminary and final site plan approval. Uh, I have a parking variance RSI exception, to the extent this board doesn't determine that it's. Not required because of proximity to the railroad and where it's affordable housing. Uh, uh, I V less, uh, parking required generally, uh, of twenty one, uh, uh, spaces, which was eighteen. Uh, proposed. Uh, 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 that's what the electric vehicle, uh, uh, credit. Uh, in addition to that parking, uh, variance and RSI is exception, uh, I have the following. Uh, I have internal roadway to be approximately four feet from building one, correct or wrong on any of this, and approximately two feet from building two.
That's changed.
That's changed, all of it, the all of it. The, the, uh. I know we have eight, eight point, I'm sorry, eight point, yeah, but now that's gonna change, eight point, eight point five feet versus ten feet between parking and building two.
Right.
To the extent that's not modified, because as discussed, in the eight point five may increase, um. Three point two feet, uh, between parking and, uh, track boundary and three point five. Feet between parking area and track boundary, uh, where ten feet is required. Uh, I have five feet, uh, between internal roadway. And track boundary, uh, where ten feet, uh, versus ten feet required in one area, or is that a little, maybe? It's been eliminated, okay? Um, and, uh, so with the parking RSI exemption. And a couple of, of parking, uh, 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 area location. Uh, uh, exceptions that I, I just listed, we also have monument sign variances for size and front yard location. And the building covered to twenty five point five percent versus twenty five percent, given the additional. Uh, 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 backload preventer, uh, uh, enclosed area in the building and the covered downshift.
I had misspoken, the, the addition of the water room brought the coverage to twenty five point five. The addition of the covering over the traction closure brought the building coverage to tw- to twenty six percent. So each of those, twenty six point zero percent total.
Okay, twenty six total.
Each of those components is a half a percent.
Twenty six percent versus twenty five percent back implemented building coverage. Um, that's the, those are the deviations I have, but does that come forward with, uh, what our planner and the applicants looking at?
Yeah.
Well, that's what you're voting on, also on, um. The ZABO eleven. Um, I'm sorry, the, the ZABO list of eleven conditions, the ZABO conditions follow, until we're gonna carry those over, but obviously, condition seven and nine. Cannot be carried forward, carried over.
You said we're gonna reconcile, right?
Yeah, yeah, those, yeah.
But seven says that, uh.
Yeah, the, your, the original intent was to use that as an energy space, that's not valid, they said that they are valid or still relevant. Based on the revisions that have been presented tonight, and that, that goes nine to the sense of correct, then, correct, I agree.
And Mister Warner, we are also unsure on this property whether or not a pole is gonna be required. So to the extent that, a utility pole.
Oh, yeah, the RSI exemption again?
If, if it is required by the party.
As, as we did with the last application, and as we've done with many applications of late. Uh, uh, because we require everything to be underground, uh, but, uh, our requirement is one thing. And JCPN L's requirement's another, they don't always jive, I guess. Uh, 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 so to the extent necessary, they would be asking for, uh, an RSI estimate this exemption. Uh, from the requirement, can we send our ordinance, do we have, do we have it here for this one? I don't know if we have it in this one, we don't, so it's just an RSI exemption. Uh, 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 from a requirement that, uh, uh, utilities be underground for new construction. New residential. We're gonna have a condition about JCPN L.
Yeah, first energy JCPN L, there has to be something significant, first, uh, community safety. Because basically, I don't know how they're gonna get to that pole.
We have to reconcile access.
You need, you need to get the official answer from First Energy.
And I'm looking at the previous resolution. There's a requirement that the, uh. That they get approval from the, of the fire chief. So that one continue, right?
Yeah, carry forward, yeah. We'll go through each resolution and everything that was presented tonight and, and add and subtract as we need to. That's why with the last one, uh, uh, and no doubt with the, the two this evening, assuming there's an approval, the second this evening. Uh, uh, we have multiple rounds of reconciliation to ensure that all the, all conditions, uh, uh, carried forward. Uh, uh, they're modified as necessary, they're eliminated as necessary, new ones are in as, as necessary, although we've. Getting pretty much addressed them all, I think.
The extent of elimination or purely mod, the extent you eliminate or purely modify a condition, we have a list of those, so we have. Plan, do our own reconciliation of the.
Oh, you want, you want like a table, what?
Right.
Because there were eighty two conditions.
Right, yeah. Into without a sub question. I can make a step sheet or a document with a table that shows resolution, preliminary resolution, amended, grand, final. And we'll, we'll.
Because otherwise, it would be impossible, track, track.
Correct, you could, is. To, to double check us all and, you know, on a cross reference, re- reconciliation, sure. Yeah, I, I say sure, only because John said voluntary, he doesn't say. Voluntary, but, uh, probably being even more frank and candid than I usually am, so it must be the hour.
Good, uh.
Yes, that's, that's relieved, I'll assume it's with all stipulated two conditions and, 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 uh, same as before, we have six.
Eight, two. She should summarize, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I, I.
I never catch you on.
Thank, thank you, I, I thought you were starting to deliberate, I wanted to make sure I had the leaf saw. So, please, it's a nation.
Thank you, Mister Warner, thank you, Mister Chairman. As you heard this evening in our testimony, we are here seeking amended preliminary and final site plan approval, along with the relief that was just listed by. Your board attorney relating to the property at block one twenty four, lot one eighteen Mount Ari. For this one hundred percent affordable housing project, there are twelve units, we believe that the plan that was presented this evening. Provided a significant improvement in both circulation and location of buildings. Um, also the impact to neighbors from that, which was approved at preliminary, and we're hopeful that the board agrees and will view this application favorably. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The big motion?
I'm willing to review that.
So Jeff moved and Karen seconded.
But not on the resolution.
Not, I, I grant that as a grant of the, all the relief sought together with the, all the conditions stipulated to. That can be said.
Thank you.
Right, with a resolution between the previous.
With a reconciliation.
Reconciliation between the previous.
Well, that'll be something that will be on the obligation of Mr. Zabel, because he's on.
Right, yeah.
That's all right, we pay him.
Tonight is the only one.
All right.
Is there a second?
Yeah, that was Karen.
Okay, you're, thank you. Okay, Ms. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Harwood?
Yes.
Mr. Simmel?
Yes.
Mr. Walden?
Yes.
And Mr. Zazarian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for bearing with us. Just trying to make it better, that's all, and you did, you changed this one a lot, thank you.
The only, the only public comment was essentially favorable.
Oh, they, the, uh, engineer. Yeah, no, it's.
We teach you that in school, you get to.
Can we? Shouldn't be paying those. No, there's no executive session.